I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening. Hi, everyone. Our first item of business is public comment. Mrs. Newhouse, do you see anyone out there? Oh, I think there are. We have two written comments and two in-person comments. Thank you Christine Lemieux and Carol Reardon for submitting written comments. Next, we will be -- it looks as though those attending in person are not here just yet, so we will move on to item four. Okay, thank you. And then come back to that part. Approval of items by consensus. We have approval of minutes April 14th, 2021. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Ragsdale. All in favor? That is six and one extension.
Please, thank you.
Thank you. We have item B, acceptance of the Wilmington Educational Foundation miscellaneous grants in the amount of $4,409. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Samaha, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor?
Should I read them first or do I?
Well, I'm gonna vote. Let's vote first. Can we accept them and then you can read them? Are you voting in favor of them?
Yes, I will vote to accept it.
That's unanimous. Mr. Ragsdale, will you please read the grants for us?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, so we have the Wilmington Educational Foundation, request to award $4,409 to the following recipients. Jennifer Perkins, strings teacher, $690 to restring school string instruments. Kaylee D., middle school school counselor, $500 for Be Kind to All Kinds. Caitlin Scarfo, first grade at the Woburn Street School, $500 for diverse classroom books to promote anti-racism, diversity, and inclusion. And Lisa King, Shawsheen principal, $2,719 for the bookworm vending machine.
Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much to WEF.
I know. Huge thank you to WEF and congratulations to the recipients. We have warrants, G437, R222, FS53. Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? That is unanimous. CB14. Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is six and one extension. Payroll ending 5/12/2021. Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is unanimous. And finally, sped 33. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? Five and two extensions. You good, Tracy? Okay. All right. Item five is our school committee reorganization. So at this time, we are looking for nominations for chair, vice chair, secretary, and then we will reorg our committees. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to make -- are we starting at the top?
We'll begin with the chair.
We'll begin with the chair, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that Jen Bryson resume and retain her seat as chair.
I second that.
Second now.
All right, roll call.
Well, first, are there any other?
Oh, sorry. Well, there were so many seconds that I didn't know. Okay, sorry.
She's just so excited.
Are there any other nominations? Thank you, David. Oh, who seconded? Mrs. Newhouse. Sorry. There were a couple, but that was the first. That was what I saw. All right. Discussion. All right. Thank you. I think. Thank you. Thank you for nominating me. And I think I'm happy to continue if you will have me, so thank you. Mrs. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Fenely?
Yes.
Mr. Samaha?
Yes.
Mrs. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Ragsdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Plowman?
Yes.
Jen Bryson, yes. We're looking for a nomination for vice chair. Is there a nomination for vice chair? Mr. Fenely?
If he'll continue, I would renominate Mr. Ragsdale.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Burns. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none. Any discussion?
I'm willing to continue.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Fenely?
Yes.
Mr. Samaha?
Yes.
Mrs. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Ragsdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Plowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryson, yes. Are there any nominations for secretary? Mr. Samaha?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Burns if she would like to continue in that role.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. -- sorry, I saw Jess's hand. Mr. Fenely, second?
Absolutely.
Any discussion, MJ?
Happy to do so. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mrs. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Fenely?
Yes.
Mr. Samaha?
Yes.
Mrs. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Ragsdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Plowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryson, yes. Okay. Now, we'll move on to the subcommittees. First up, we have the policy subcommittee. Currently, I'm serving on that committee, David Ragsdale, Jesse Fenely, and MJ Burns as an alternate. Is anyone interested in taking a seat in this committee? Are the current members happy to remain?
I am.
I'm happy to remain here. I would also be interested to hear what committees Melissa is interested in. But I'm happy to stay on the policy committee.
Okay.
I would be interested in remaining as an alternate if it doesn't disrupt the work going on with the committee.
Okay. I'm happy to stay on, to continue moving the work forward, although we haven't been moving as quickly as we were prior. But I'm hoping that we can sort of pick that back up again.
Agreed.
Okay. All right, we have the sick bank subcommittee. We have Joe Newhouse. This seat was vacated by Steve York, so we do need someone to fill in here.
I would be happy to do that.
Thank you, Mrs. Plowman. All right. Superintendent evaluation subcommittee. Currently, I'm serving on that committee, Joe Newhouse and Jay Samaha. I'd like to remain as the chair. I think I'd like to stay on that committee, if that's okay? Joe and Jay?
I'm happy to stay on unless somebody else wants it.
Yeah, same exact thing. If somebody else would like to be part of that, then I'm happy to give it up. But I really enjoy being on there.
Is someone interested in taking a seat on that committee? All right, we'll continue as is. School committee representative to the WEF Board of Directors. That is currently Jesse Fenely.
I would say I'm happy to continue. The meetings have occasionally been a challenge to make with my work schedule, so if anybody's interested, I would reluctantly give it up. But there's a small part of me that feels like I'm doing both them and us a disservice by missing some meetings, but I'm happy to continue if nobody else can or wants to.
Okay, and then just for -- just so you -- so the meetings are actually the second Tuesday of every month, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So he's happy to stay, but if someone would like to be our representative?
I will continue on.
I mean, I can do that, Jesse, if that's a conflict for you. I think I can work that into my work rotation.
If you think so, then I just, like I said, I feel bad that I've missed some of the meetings and I'm not there as much as I'd like to be. So if you can, then by all means.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So Mrs. Plowman will be our new school committee representative to the WEF Board of Directors. Next, we have our school committee rep to the WPS Wellness Advisory Committee. That's currently Mrs. Burns. Mrs. Burns, any thoughts?
The -- I find this -- I love this subcommittee. I've found with the pandemic and my job, the medical field, has been problematic even though they are virtual. I'm happy to remain on it because I think that as we get back to some sort of normalcy in the fall, that once my job has settled down in its transition, I'd like to continue. But again, I would welcome anybody who might be interested. It's a wonderful subcommittee, and Doreen Crowe and her team really do a wonderful job in driving the wellness in the district.
And those are usually weekdays after school?
Mm-hmm.
And they meet once a month?
Yes.
Okay.
It's either once a month or once every other month, depending upon the projects that they're working on.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else -- does anyone have any interest in that committee? All right. Can you all remain?
Yes, I will.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
School committee representative to CPAC, that is currently David Ragsdale.
This is not up to date because it's Joe.
It's definitely March 2021. Thank you. So it's actually -- I did know that. Why did I even? It's actually Joe Newhouse. David, are you the alternate?
Maybe. I'm sure I was willing to be the alternate.
Do you have what I'm looking at where it says David and?
Yeah, I have it. Yeah, I have my self-listed on that.
And it is marked 4/14/21, correct? Okay, I'm just making sure. I'm not looking at an old one. So that's actually Joe Newhouse. Joe, are you happy to continue?
Sure.
In that role? Okay. Doesn't seem as though we know exactly who the alternate is. I think Joe is not needed, the alternate, because we haven't had anyone else attend those meetings, but would someone like to serve as the alternate?
I'm happy to be the alternate.
Okay. So David, we think will continue to be the alternate.
Either continue or become whichever. Turns out to be appropriate.
Funny. Okay. The school committee executive session minutes. This is held by the chair, so I think it will just continue as is. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
School committee legislative representatives. We have MJ Burns and Jesse Fenely.
I would like to continue in this role.
I thought so.
Yeah.
And Jesse?
I'm happy to support MJ however I can.
Okay. Is there anyone else who was hoping to join that committee? Okay, great. School committee handbook protocol. This is -- I'm on this committee, MJ Burns and David Ragsdale.
I would like to continue, and I think -- I know we haven't met in a while because I think the priorities kind of that we are navigating, I think supersede the prior -- you know, the handbook. But I do think it is time that we get back and revise it and look at it to make sure that it's up to date and reasonable for all board members.
I'm happy to step down from this committee if someone would like to take my seat.
You don't like to work with me?
But if I'm gonna focus -- if I'd like to try and really focus on those policies, then I think managing both is confusing for me. Like, it's sort of, what am I looking at again? So I think it's just better for us if I -- I mean, I'm happy to stay on it, of course. But I think if someone else would like to look at the handbook and the protocols in support in some of those revisions, I think that would be helpful. There's not many meeting times. Mrs. Samaha?
I would be interested.
Great.
Oh, great.
That would be great. And David, will you continue?
I'm happy to continue.
Okay. Great. Tracy? So that'll be MJ, David, and then Jay. That negotiation team we have finished, so we're moving on to the contract negotiation team with the WTA. That is MJ and David. We're in the middle of that, so I would imagine we should keep that as is.
Mm-hmm.
David and MJ.
Yeah.
Yeah. And everyone else seems to be?
It would be a little bit odd to switch out.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Mid-negotiation.
Yeah, and we're all comfortable with that. Great, thank you.
Do we need to do anything to officially wind down the cafeteria negotiation team? Do we take any formal dissolution of that?
I don't know if formally. You certainly can because we won't have that for another three years, so you can obviously.
I don't know if that's necessary, but would you like to make a motion to?
I would -- I move that the committee disband the Cafeteria Employees Association negotiation team.
Is there a second, Mrs. Burns? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Committee to recommend owners' project manager for town hall, school admin building. Jesse just started this work, so I imagine.
Happy to keep going.
Great. All right. School committee, Family Communication Relations Committee. It is a revived, revitalized committee, I'm happy to say. I serve on that, Joe and Jay, and MJ is an alternate. I would very much like to stay, if possible, because I feel like we're sort of in the middle of things and it might be odd to switch out right now. But if someone else was very excited to get on that, then I'd be happy to give them my seat. Joe, Jay?
If someone else wants it, otherwise I'd be happy to stay.
I feel the same exact way. If somebody else would like to be on, then fine.
Is anyone else interested in taking one of those seats? Okay, we'll keep it as is. Okay. Equity. Jay. David and I serve on that committee. Jay?
Yeah, I would like to stay. Very much like to stay on that committee.
I too would very much like to stay, but again, I don't want to monopolize. So if someone else would like to get on that committee, then we can certainly make space for them.
I'm willing to remain on the committee as well, but if someone feels a calling and they would like to join, I would set aside for them.
Anybody for equity? Okay. All right. That's all I have on my list. Oh.
I have a couple questions.
Yes. Well, I was gonna -- the middle school rep is not on here, which we already did. So we'll add that now to the new revision of this.
Perfect. And then how often do we reorganize?
Subcommittees reorg -- I mean officially, they reorganize once a year.
Okay.
But addition, we can add. Adding subcommittees can happen at any time. Dissolving committees could happen at -- I mean, there's no rule that says it has to be at a certain time. And if someone at some point said, "It's too much, I can't," or "I'd really like to get on that," we could certainly reorg it at a meeting. It would be an agenda item, and we would say, "We're looking for a new volunteer for this particular committee." Is that helpful?
Mm-hmm, thank you. So is there a new subcommittee for the middle school?
Yes. The middle school planning committee.
But is that a subcommittee? I think that -- I don't think we've usually treated it that way.
She's a representative.
She's our rep, our representatives.
So it's not a subcommittee, it's a school committee. It's actually a representative under the superintendent, so it wouldn't be on our subcommittee -- our subcommittee work that we drive. It would -- that's a committee held by the superintendent, and that's an invitation by him to have that all. Every committee he handles, is there a representative necessarily invited per se?
Okay.
This is like when you and I were on the strategic planning committee as reps, but it wasn't a school committee.
An official subcommittee. So I take that back. But we know it. We can put it somewhere. We can put it somewhere in writing, I promise. We will not forget. Any other questions or comments?
I just had a quick question. I know we sort of disbanded the cafeteria bargaining team. Are there contracts, aside from the WTA? Are there anything coming up this year that we would need an additional one for? I think we're pretty well up to date, Paul, right?
Yeah, as if, once we get a request from a unit to bargain, and then we come to the school committee, usually the chair and superintendent will get a letter from the union, and then we'll add a subcommittee at that time.
Okay, that makes sense.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions? Sorry, it feels very businesslike, but thank you all for your service and for volunteering hours beyond the hours you spend preparing and attending these meetings. We really do appreciate all of the time and work that you put into that additional volunteer work. So thank you. All right, so if it's okay with the committee, I would love to move -- our presenters are here. I haven't seen them. Mrs. Newhouse, did you see any? Did you see? Sorry. Are they here? I'm just -- are they -- I'm checking to see if they're here.
One is here, one is not.
Okay, so we can wait, that's fine. So what I'm asking the committee is if we can move the summer band camp proposal presentation up in the agenda. But if they're both not here, then why don't we move into the superintendent's report? And then when they arrive, we'll stop and move them into that spot. Is that okay?
Sure.
All right, so item six, superintendent's report. Dr. Brandt.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. There are three items listed this evening under the superintendent's report. All have information that is included in the packet, and I'll go in order. First off, just to provide you with an update, we've tried to do this with some regularity through Ms. Stern Armstrong, our director of personnel. And so this provides you with an update on our status at this point in time, at this point in the school year. And so pleased to be able to say, as you can see there, that overall, right now, we are in very good shape as we're heading towards the last stretch of the school year. You also get a sense of what our known or identified vacancies are going into next year. And, you know, there is no sort of standard or average number from year to year. As you can imagine, it varies tremendously. Last year, for example, going into this year, we had close to 30 retirements. Going into next year, we don't have as many. And so we're hovering around that 30, I think it is, in total. And so we're absolutely actively pursuing with advertisements and postings. This is, in general, the perfect time to -- and it's an active time shared by other districts that are looking for personnel for the following year. I suspect in lots of cases, things are a little bit delayed than normal for obvious reasons, but we are active and we are in pursuit of trying to fill these positions as quickly as we can, and I'll keep you updated as we move along. I'll pause there if there are any questions.
Just one very brief one. Does this give us a list or a sense of, or do you have an idea when you'd have a better sense of retirements that will take effect for the next school year?
So this captures -- this captures the known or reflects the known retirements that we have right now. It is certainly possible that someone could, you know, hand in their retirement plans or pursue that, but it's unlikely. Generally, at this point in time, for both contractual reasons and other with if they're a part of the MTRS system or teachers' retirement system, generally those decisions have been made by this point. So I wouldn't expect to see a great change in that.
That was sort of my recollection, so I'm just jogging my memory. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Ragsdale?
I'd just like to leave a comment that staffing has been one of the biggest challenges that we've faced this year, and I really want to commend and thank Mr. Armstrong for the endless and constant work of making sure that we have the staff that we need to educate kids in our buildings.
Yeah.
And, you know, this is the year that the HR directors hoped would never come.
Yeah, and thank you for that shout-out. It is -- it's those kind of kind words and so well-deserved, you know. And in normal times, there's a struggle that I think, and I believe I've spoken about this in the past, where I think that in our organizations, the additional requirements, paperwork and such that flows through a personnel department is expanding all the time. And, you know, we are, for the most part, she is a department of one. She has support, but largely speaking. And in these particular times, it has just been absolutely unprecedented. We use that word all the time, but it's true. The volume of people flowing through there, including substitutes, and she has not missed a beat, and her leadership has helped truly keep us afloat. And it's with amazement sometimes that, indeed I have, that she's been able to do that. So a great credit to her, and we're in a good place right now because of that.
Mrs. Burns?
I just have to comment that serving on this board even before we had a human resource director, it blows my mind how it was -- this was done initially with the superintendent and help and aides, and I think that was one of the best additions to our budget line item and that I think I've seen, because just seeing when we first got our first director in and seeing how that role has expanded with the demands of regulations and, well, I guess regulations, everything stems from that in employment law. It's -- we are very fortunate to, you know, to piggyback off David, to have someone of our skill level and abilities and resiliency to continue to ensure that our district gets the best of the best and that we do so in the most efficient amount of time, you know, without disruption. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, moving on to the second item, middle school student lunch survey. There is information that's included in here, and I just wanted to briefly revisit this. As you know, we've talked about -- we talked about this here previously. And thank you to Dr. Quirk and her team and her staff, who have certainly done some further work and exploration. And that's really the intention here, is to just provide you with that update. It was a -- there was a suggestion, I believe it was at our last meeting, in which it would be insightful to gather information from students, and that's really what this reflects. And I want to thank Dr. Quirk and, again, her staff for doing that. It's not my intention tonight to go into great detail. The information certainly is in there. But in short, based upon the responses and the respective survey of the students, I think you can see that there certainly were a number of students who, on the one hand, did not identify a specific concern or perhaps problem, if you will, with the gymnasium. On the other hand, there certainly were students that did voice their displeasure, if you will, in sitting in there. And so the intention in short is to hold at the place that they're at right now in terms of utilizing the three locations, cafeteria, the annex, as it's called, and the gymnasium. But to try their very best to accommodate a couple of things. One, those students who don't want to sit in the gym. And two, the students that are continue -- that continue to be fine, if you will, accepting of the gym, but providing them with the opportunity to sit with friend groups. And that seems to be sort of the center compromise there that I think will help a lot of them to get through what, at this point in time, and I'm truly not counting, but I'm told I think it's around 25 or so lunches, give or take, holidays and half-day in there. So again, thank you to Dr. Quirk for that information. I'm happy to take any questions if you like. There's one thing that I did just want to highlight, because I know that there were some questions about this in terms of the approach that was being taken, or is being taken, rather, in the gym around cleaning. That did come up in some comments, and so if I may, I'll just briefly touch upon that. That the gym as well, as other locations certainly are cleaned, and there was a question around, was that happening and was that a concern? There are, firstly, in the cafeteria tables and the annex, disinfectant sprays are being used. We've expanded the custodian. Thank you to Mr. Hooper, who's brought on board a custodian earlier in the second shift, I guess you'd call it. So there's an expansion of the custodial right now in the middle school to help try and accommodate for this. Floors are swept when students are leaving the gym. Following that sweeping, the floors in the gym are mopped using a spray mop, and that has interchangeable reusable pads that are taken off in between lunches. And so that is an approach that's being taken. It is not the case that the gym floor is being trampled on by hundreds of kids and then students are, you know, are put in there to eat on the floor. That's certainly not the approach, and I just wanted to comment on that. So with all of that, I'll pause, and if there are any questions that members have, I'm happy to try my best and answer them.
Mrs. Burns?
Just a very quick. So when you say that, that the tables are being cleaned and the gymnasium floors are being mopped and swept, is this in between lunches or before and after lunches? Just for clarification purposes? Because of the timing with?
Between.
Between, okay.[1751.68]
Between, between, I would say, yep. And, you know, they, I mean, the kids, generally speaking, are great. They truly are, in terms of keeping areas pretty clean. The trash is, of course, collected. The students on the desks are helping wipe those down, or cafeteria staff, or staff themselves. I mean, I've seen all three of those in, in my visits. So it is between lunches.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Other questions? I just have a couple. With this allowing to choose friends to sit next to in the gym, so part of this idea of having them with students, or seeing students each day, is that we, if we have to do contact tracing, we have a very clear record of who they're sitting with. So if there's this idea of now, we might offer them this ability to choose, does that mean that they're going to be able to choose different people each? Are we going to lose track of who they're actually sitting next to on a regular basis? That would be my only concern. So as much as I think it's, it's nice that they have that opportunity to choose, it also can cause, it also can cause some anxiety if kids know that they typically sit in one place, and now they actually don't know who they're going to sit with. So there's this, having it be something that they're familiar with could actually be good on one hand. On the other hand, for our purposes, is it, is it safe? Do we know that they're, do we know who they're with each? You know, we do now, but if they start choosing, what's that going to look like? So I guess that's my only hesitation.
Yeah. It is my, it's a, it's a great question. And it is my understanding that there's a, there's a, in general, there is a consistency of the, the map, the outline of where students are sitting. And that holds true for the annex, the cafeteria, or the gymnasium. It's understood that, that contact tracing continues to be a reality. And, and so certainly it's a set, it's a set structure, if you will, almost like a seating plan. That is the intention of how that's going to follow, follow. There's the consistency of kids in each of those lunches. They're not going back and forth, you know, from day to day. And so once that's been established, and I think it already has been, then they're shaping those, those groupings, if you will.
Another follow-up. If we were, and so I know we keep talking about just getting to the end of the year, but if we were to need this many lunches for next year, I would very much want to make sure we're preparing with adequate seating, if we're starting the year like that. So I know we don't have a sense right now, but I would suggest that we start preparing for what that's going to look like in September.
Yep.
Because I don't think that this is something families can sort of support, knowing it's going to be a full year.
Well, just to echo it, if I may, nor, nor would it be my intention. And I, I think I made the comment at the last meeting that this is, I'm looking at this and staff there as a, as a short-term or interim measure, if you will. But if nothing changes with regards to the regulations or the requirements of six feet distancing during lunches for next year, we have to come up with an alternative plan. And I'll be honest with you, in this moment, I don't know what that is. I don't know. But, but clearly, it has to be something different than what we have now. And, and, you know, the coming months will provide that opportunity to shape that plan. On that point, you know, we, we don't have anything further. I know some are wondering from the Department of Education around next year's guidelines. We've been told that something, at least in a preliminary sense, is supposed to be coming this month. But at this, at this time of this meeting, there's not been anything yet released. So we'll see. But certainly, we'll have to come up with something else. And I, I can only imagine that that will include the use of more classroom spaces, in all likelihood. And we'll have to accommodate and adjust the plan accordingly, if that's the direction we're headed.
Mr. Raxdale?
Just in light of that, I hope that we're also starting to think about what this looks like now that seventh and eighth graders, well, actually, now, many sixth graders, but with 12 and up, able to be vaccinated. But that also should, I think it's going to change, change the scene and the outlook when we come to the fall. No doubt, a lot more to come from that, from, from that, from DASY and DBA.
I think so. I think so.
And my final, my final comment is, so there is some, there is a rotation. So if they've been sitting in one place, there'll, there'll be a rotation to another place in a number of weeks. And so I would just make sure that the communication is clear for families. So if my child is sitting in one place right now, but now they're going to need to bring something with them to sit in that, just want to make sure families are aware of that in, in advance, so that we're not kind of struggling the night before, wait a minute, what? You're doing what? So I don't know. I have a child at the middle school. I don't exactly know when that's happening. So I think just to make sure that we're, families are all informed of that change would be helpful.
Certainly. Good feedback. Okay. With that, thank you. The final item, just fan use in, in the classroom and, oh.
We think we jumped over 6A. Or was that deliberate, or?
Uh, you know, I, I missed a component of 6A, and that was the middle school assistant principal search. My apologies. Let me back up to that. I did the first part, though, staffing. There, sorry about that. The middle school assistant principal search, there is a, there is a brief memo under 6A from Miss Stern Armstrong, who has kicked off the search for a replacement, a permanent replacement for Dr. Quirk. And what you can see there is the list of those that have volunteered and were selected to participate in the, in the search process. They had their first meeting yesterday, and that was an orientation meeting for the planning of this, of this search, following a consistent model that we use and have used, both with Miss Stern Armstrong and myself together in the approach for these types of searches. And so there are interviews that are being planned for later, the later part of this month. And I'll certainly keep the committee posted on developments as, as they ensue with that. Back to 6C. There's a memo that is in your packet that is, addresses two things relative to health and safety. It's just a brief update, and that's fan usage and masks. It just seemed timely to, to bring mention to this for, for a couple of reasons. One, you know, hopefully at some point, we'll have warmer weather around. And it's actually a good thing, I suppose you could argue, in the month of May, that we still are at a more modest or cooler temperatures. But knowing that those temperatures are on their way, this is a directional shift from where we were at the beginning of the year. And so that's why I thought that I would mention it here. And we'll make sure that it's mentioned so that our families are also aware, and of course, staff are also aware. And the change or the shift is, is that unlike the fall, when fans or window air conditioners were the guidance from, from Ms. Crowe, from Board of Health, Ms. Newhouse, Dr. Curta, was that fans could not be used or should not be used. Air conditioners, window air conditioners should not be used. We're at a different point right now. And so it's with the entrusting of their, their view on things, their interpretation of any relative guidelines that are out there, that I'm taking our lead on this. And I just wanted to make sure that there's not lack of clarity or a concern around safety. These are deemed safe now to use. And so both of those, window air conditioners and fans, as long as, as you can see the memo, that windows are kept open for free airflow exchange. The other thing that we have, of course, that will still continue to operate in all of our educational spaces is, are the air purifiers. We started out of the gate, you'll recall, with those when we opened in person. And those, those will continue to run as they have, really continuously since, since school started. Masks is the second item you'll see on that list. And just again, seem, there's been some questions that I know have popped up around, are we continuing with masks? Do we need to? Do the guidelines at the state level impact or change our, our requirement of those? And at the present time, nothing has changed with face coverings. And that includes both inside and outside of school, as well as athletics. That's still where the guidance is taking us. And so we're, we're aligning with that. And again, next year will be, we'll, we'll see where we go. But for right now and for the remainder part of this school year, unless something changes with CDC or, or the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, then we'll hold the course on that through until the end of the year. And with that, unless there are any questions, that's the superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Mr. Smahan?
Yeah. On the, on the middle school assistant principal search, I saw, looking at, I was, I'm happy to see a variety of roles on there, a lot of staff roles, and of course, community members as well. So I think that's sort of a broad range, which I think is great. I'm curious, though, that I don't see, you know, a middle school or somebody at a, a school-based administrator on this team. And I was wondering what, maybe why not? Or how is that, is there, how is that going to be incorporated into the search process?
So, yep, great question. So Dr. Quirk, two things on this. And, and this is not, I would, in terms of the searches that I've been a part of and, and what I think is most appropriate. Dr. Quirk is not going to be involved in the first pass of selection of the candidates. That's the charge of the screening committee. I think that that separation, if you will, is important. Dr. Quirk will have, and the committee members know this, so I'm talking freely about this. She certainly is welcome to, and I think plans to sit in on the interviews, but will allow the work of the screening committee to conduct their work and assess the candidates they've interviewed, and then make a recommendation for a certain number to move forward in the process. Once those candidates move forward in the process, Dr. Quirk and Mr. Faircloth will absolutely have a chance to be a part of those, the subsequent interviews, site visits. And ultimately, Dr. Quirk's recommendation to, to me, as a candidate, of which then I'll make the final appointment. So it's certainly to come and will be involved throughout. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions or comments? I just, I'm just quickly go back to the lunch. Is it possible for, for some of us to, to see it in action?
I can tell you absolutely, Dr. Quirk would welcome any of you. And, and truly mean that. She, she has said that to me. Most certainly, yeah.
I'd be, I'd be very interested in just seeing some of the things that we've been talking about all year. I'm sure others would as well. So what would be the best way to just email?
You could, we, I could, yes, actually, that would, thank you for that suggestion. That would be great, yeah.
So I think if you're interested, and I think it's, I'm thinking specifically about lunchtime, I'd like to be there at lunch, just so I can get a sense of what it, what it looks like specifically in the middle school. Because that's, I think, where most of our comments have been coming from, although it might not, maybe others have another interest. But that'd be great. Great. Thank you. All right. You're here. Okay. So now, we're going to, we're going to hold on item seven, on old business. And we're going to move right to 8D, which is the summer band camp proposal presentation. Mr. Ferrara and Ms. DeLulo are here. Hello, welcome.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
How are you?
Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having us.
This is exciting news.
It is, yeah. So I'll start with, kind of going over what a traditional year at camp would look like, kind of without the COVID restrictions. And then after that, the rest of the slideshow. Kind of goes through what would be new this year, and just general health and safety overview. So first of the educational goals, and these have kind of been put in place since we started going to camp. And a lot of them, like, if you look at the first one, it's more just logistics-based. So to prepare for the fall performances at the football games, learning the marching, learning the music. But as you go through the list, you see that, you know, they're more framed around the program as a whole. So like, the one that I really noticed this year was to provide a memorable group experience, which will promote group momentum throughout the school year. The, it's actually just today in jazz band, I heard seniors talking about a skit that they did. I think it was like their sub-freshman year. So for them, it was four years ago. And they're talking about it like it happened this past summer. And so the energy that comes out of this camp really is just contagious among the students. And that's kind of something that, fortunately, we haven't noticed a negative decline with at the high school level, because all of our freshman students right now, for the most part, well, no, now I'm trying to think, didn't go to camp. They're eighth graders.
If they were sub-freshmen, they did.
Right. Okay, that's what I thought. So they had that camp experience. But unfortunately, where we are noticing the difference is the current eighth graders, who did not have their sub-freshman year the year before. Or this year, it would have been. And so like, for example, in terms of numbers and students that continue into high school band, eighth grade to ninth grade is a popular drop-off time for numbers, just because students might not want to do it as an elective in high school. But it's generally higher than 50%. And this year, we were down, out of a class of 38, only 14 have decided to continue in high school. And that can be due to many things. Obviously, this year was very different. They have a new teacher. But I do think a big part of it was not gaining that high school experience that they do get from camp. So the next slide just goes through the itinerary. And this has kind of been the historic itinerary, what we've done every other year. And if we were to go this year, it really wouldn't change all that much, just the locations would. But in terms of what we do and what we accomplish, it would remain pretty much the same. So you can see, the days are pretty full. They have breakfast in the morning. We have shower rehearsal, shower rehearsal, marching rehearsal. Then they can, don't need to rehearse that.
It's all about safety.
That's right. That's in a slide to come. Um, you know, then they have some free time after lunch. And then we go right back into charting skills, dinner, and then they break off into sectionals. And then they end the day with a full rehearsal before the evening activity. How that would be different this year is the full rehearsal traditionally has been indoors, and we're going to move that outdoors just for extra safety. And so we can spread out at the proper 10-foot intervals, which I'll go over in a little bit. So like, you know, you can see, the schedule pretty much is a rinse and repeat. The first day's a little different, because we have to get to the island. And then the last day, of course, is pretty much just a travel day, with that day four being the same as the two before. Just more marching and more music skills. So this kind of goes over the finances of it and what the cost of it would be. And from, again, years prior, it's not much different. There was a little bit of increase in the buses and the cost of the camp itself. But when broken among the total students going, and that was an estimated number, it only is $20 increase. So from, from years prior. So it really isn't that big of an increase. Again, it is an estimate. It's kind of me estimating how many sub-freshmen we're going to have, and how many eighth grade students are going to continue. When I asked them before, that was just a survey. It wasn't like the official them putting it in. So that number could fluctuate. But I did kind of lean on the smaller side. In other words, the more expensive side, just to kind of play it safe. So camp by cohorts. This is kind of something that really benefits us. So historically, at camp, all the cabins are divided by grade level and then by gender. And they sleep in that group, and they eat in that group. And everything else is outdoors. The entirety of the itinerary I showed you before, apart from meals and sleeping, and now the full evening rehearsal will be outdoors. So all the activities are outside, which is great, because that means that any student that they are going to be in close contact with indoors unmasked would be the same throughout the entire five days. It would just be their cabin cohort. It's a kind of a policy that, or a method that the camp has adapted to this year. And when we heard about it, we were like, perfect. It's what we do. So that makes it easy. And the kids will be used to it. So now, this is the health and safety portion. There's kind of three components to this. First is what the performing arts health and safety protocols are, kind of set forth by the state and DESI. And then it goes into what the camp's going to be, how the camp's going to be different in terms of our decisions. And then finally, it is the camp itself, the institution Camp Nacomas, and what they're going to put in place. So this slide has been pretty much the case since the fall, when we began. Students will be spaced 10 feet outdoors. Percussion can be spaced at six feet, because they're not playing a wind instrument. Students will be required to wear an instrument mask and/or bell covers whenever possible. And the bell covers, we, we have all of those from the past performance that we had at the football games. So those will be provided by the performing arts department. And then when not playing, the students will switch from their instrument mask to their traditional mask. So again, these are the practices that the kids have been doing since the fall. So now, in terms of how we're going to alter camp for COVID, the boat, it's an island. So we need to get there. Traditionally, we've done two boat rides, and it is a jammed, jam-packed boat. We are not going to do that this year. We're going to separate it into four different boat rides. And again, that kind of is the cohort, because we're going to divide it by grade level, which is how they're divided in their cabins anyways. No stu-, this is rarely an issue for us, but no student will be permitted to return to the camp if they need to leave the island for any reason. Students attending camp will be required to produce a negative PCR COVID-19 test, taken within five days of arrival. Students can arrive late to camp, just so long as the negative test result is five days prior to their date of arrival. Chaperones will be fully vaccinated, and that is with potential minor exceptions. We're not mandating that all chaperones get vaccinated, but it is something that we're going to be looking at when we are making selections for chaperones. Cabin, so this is the shower part, cabin, bathroom, and shower rotation. So generally, we just, like you saw in the itinerary, give a chunk of time and say, here's when you can shower. And there's times in the beginning of the day, the middle of the day, during that free period, and then at the end of the day. This year, we would do it on like a, a rotating cycle, where it's assigned by cabin. One, to kind of prevent lingering in the shower rooms and bathrooms, but also just to keep that close unmasked contact with, in that cabin group, just like eating and just like sleeping. And if anyone has any questions, you can stop me as I'm going. And then in addition to students' traditional masks, students will also be required to bring an instrument mask and bell cover. So like I said in the previous slide. So now, the rest of the health and safety is coming from the Camp Nacomas. So staff, and, and this is all pertaining to the face coverings and their policy on that. Staff and campers in the same cabin group are not required to wear face masks or always physically distanced from each other, but will still be encouraged to limit close and physically distanced from each other, but will still be encouraged to limit close interaction, especially when they're interacting with students indoors. Staff and campers must wear face masks when interacting with other staff and campers from another cabin group, of course, especially when indoors or outdoors within six feet. But really, our policy is going to be, when you're mixed outdoors, have a mask on. Campers should plan to have a minimum of 10 masks with them at camp. Cloth coverings used as mask must have two to three layers of fabric. Mask cover, mask must cover nose and mouth, must fit snugly, and then finally, masks with the exhalation valves are not permitted. And then this is their policy on testing. So the current guidance requires each camper to provide a result, a negative result, taken within seven days of arrival, so our window is two days shorter than theirs. Proof of test results must be provided upon arrival, and will be checked in by the camp nurses, or our nurses that we're bringing with us. And then, non-essential visitors will not be permitted to visit camp this year. So, the nursing info, historically, we've always brought one nurse with us to camp. This year, we're going to up it to two, just for the added health and safety requirements pertaining to COVID-19. Nurses will also be responsible for giving out morning and evening meds to students, which has always kind of been the case. And then the last slide is just the town medical release form, which has kind of been the standard for some time now. In addition to that, I don't know if you want to bring this up now, the fact sheet? Oh, no, that's fine then, yeah. Oh, okay, great. So yeah, you can, you can look at that, the fact sheet, this is what would be going home to families, kind of a condensed version of what's different this year. The only change, if you look at the bottom, there's a little disclaimer there on who it's approved by. It's still approved by Durian, but the wording just changed a little bit, so it now should say 5621, tentatively approved by Durian Crowe, Coordinator of Health Services, subject to change based on current mass, New Hampshire and CDC camp guidelines. So if anything were to change, either to be a little bit more restrictive or more loose, the, kind of our operations would change to reflect that. So at this point, I'll just open it up for any questions and clarifications?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, of course.
Questions or comments?
Yeah.
Hi, how are you? I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
So I'm not familiar with Camp Nacomus?
Yep.
Did I say that right?
Yep.
Now, is it just going to be our students on the island, or will there be other districts?
It's just going to be our students. So the camp historically, or not historically, is a day camp for, it's-
Is it the Y?
Girls YMCA, yeah.
Girls YMCA, and that's how they operate all summer long. And then they close that camp the week before, the week that we get there. That Sunday is their last day, and that's when we arrive. So the camp is inhabited only by us for that week.
And it'll be cleaned prior to the arrival of our students?
I, I mean, I would assume that they have pretty rigorous health and safety based off of what I've got from them, but I'm not positive on that and what their, you know, what their protocols are, but I would imagine this is clean.
Actually, they're closing camp a day early. They're closing on the Saturday, so that they will have time to clean, and we'll, when we get there on Sunday.
Okay.
That's been a recent change that I was just notified of.
Wonderful, wonderful. And are you, I know you're increasing the nursing staff. Is there going to be an increase in chaperones? Because you'll have different cohorts and students in different camp. I didn't know if that was something that also had to be taken into consideration or not, it was just a-
Sure, yeah.
I've got no, you know, malintent behind, I'm just asking if that also impacts.
Yeah, so every year, I mean, the amount of chaperones that we bring is not like a concrete number, it just fluctuates depending on the needs that we need, have that year. So if we have a huge percussion section, maybe I would reach out and try to find, you know, a really good percussion instructor who can come with us. So with this year, dealing with COVID-19, I'm sure that we would kind of invest in more staff just to deal with. For example, the first thing that came to my mind, we're doing four boat trips now, so that's a longer time of kids on the island waiting for the other boats to come, so things like that, yeah. So I would certainly imagine this year, we'll have more chaperones than we generally do. But at the same time, the students are still going to be divided, the chaperones, their primary purpose is for the cabins for when they're sleeping. During the day, their time is pretty much full with what we're doing. And that part isn't changing all that much, so it won't be an overabundance need for more chaperones, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, it does, it certainly does. Knowing that it's the end of the year, is there fundraising, or are there other funding pathways that students who may, whose families may not be able to, you know, be available to participate with other funding streams?
Yeah, for sure, especially after a year like we just had. We were so concerned actually with the, we heard about the increase before, we kind of did the math and figured out how much it was going to be, and that was a big concern of ours after the year that we just had. And so I reached out to the band parents booster group and asked them if they had any kind of help they could give us, if that number was going to be too large for families to kind of accommodate. And without hesitation, they were there to help out. So on top of that, it is, I mean, historically speaking, any student who cannot go to camp for financial reasons will be covered by a band parent scholarship.
Would they reach out to you directly, and then you can coordinate that just for privacy purposes?
I was going to say, that's exactly what we do, yeah.
Very good. And I have one last question, and then I'll let it rest to my other colleagues. So since this is, is a school event, is this something that we would have to vote on?
It is here this evening seeking your approval, primarily because of the fact that, I forget exact policy, and forgive me-
It's out of state.
It's out of state trip. And so that's here. But in addition to that, it just seemed appropriate, given the circumstances that we're still navigating, and, you know, it's, there's obviously been work done, and thank you to Mike and Anita to try and shape this that's in line with CDC guidelines, and then has the blessing and the sign-off of our health, you know, our health professionals as well, too.
I love hearing about it anyway, so I think anytime that they can present what this camp is all about and what it can offer our students, I love learning about it and how it evolves and transitions, and what students can expect and what parents can expect from participating in this. So I think even at that juncture, whether it needed approval or not, I think it's always beneficial and needs to be promoted, all for performing arts, and, you know, I want to ensure that our band stays strong.
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome. I relinquish it to rest the floor now. Sorry, thank you for a PCB.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Raxdale?
So what grades are eligible to attend?
Yes, so this year, if we were to go, we would continue with the sub-freshman program, which means that all current seventh graders right now would be getting an invitation to join their, the summer, this summer going into their eighth grade year. So it'd be eighth grade students through 12th grade.
Okay, okay, so like the incoming eighth grade?
The incoming eighth graders, yeah.
Okay, so for, so for the new students, and that would be, of course, the, again, I have to think about them, current seventh graders, but also current eighth graders?
Right.
The eighth graders who are moving into high school next year, who will be freshmen next year. How does the camp handle kind of their integration with the people who are already in the high school band, who know how to march and how camp works and how the high school band works, whereas you have these new people who coming in over, you know, over the summer have, you know, have to be integrated into this?
Sure, please.
One of the remarkable things that we have in this high school band is something called Big Brothers and Big Sisters. So every student who is coming into our program knew, whether they're a rising eighth grader, whether they're an incoming eighth grader into ninth grade, whether it's someone who moves into town, knew. We always assign an upperclassman to them, and they correspond with that person over the summer. That's kind of their person to check in with, to say, you know, do I really have to take a raincoat, or, you know, do I really have to take 10 masks? And so they establish a rapport, and we worked very hard at matching the personality of the big brother or the big sister with the personality of the incoming student. And so they already arrive at camp knowing a big kid, they already have a friend, and the high school kids could not be more welcoming and warm to these kids. So they already come knowing somebody big. And, but I will share with you that, that first day, it is big eyes and rumbling tummies because they're a little nervous. And then they leave at the end of camp, and it's like they've been with our group forever.
Yeah.
And they, they don't fear, now when it's time to really come to high school, they're right at home here. It's amazing, the transformation that we see happen with the kids. So we start right from the get-go with pairing them up, trying to make it safe for them for when they're coming in and learning everything.
And then, in addition to that, at camp, once they do arrive, the first thing, the first full marching rehearsal that we have, we don't assume any knowledge. So we start from the very beginning.
Everybody.
Everybody, yeah, all together. And then from there, we are consistently breaking off into smaller sectionals, like by whatever section, instrument you play, and that allows them to have more, you know, socialized, I'm not going to say unsupervised, but them just naturally mingling and learning from their peers. So I just think that, you know, the Big Brother, Big Sister program, combined with how much we kind of focus on that at camp, those smaller cohorts, it really does just happen naturally.
Thank you. Mr. Smaha?
I just, I guess I'll just say, thank you. I'm so happy to see this happening again this coming year, and we're not going another year without it, so I'm just very happy with that. I think, I mean, having, you know, my son went through it as a sub-freshman, I guess, two years ago, and then he's a freshman this year, so it was a really fantastic experience for him, and he's gotten, you know, a ton out of it. So everything that you were just saying, I think is 100% true, so I'm just really happy to see this taking place next year. So thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Smaha? Other comments or questions? Mrs. Burns?
I'm sorry, it's very, I just had a quick question, knowing that this is an island, I'll keep it quick. How long is the boat ride? I'm thinking in case of an emergency, but I know how safe it is now that we're practicing shower routines. I just didn't know with, because it was a boat ride, so you're off the mainland, I didn't know what the duration of that.
It's a 20-minute boat ride.
Okay, so what happens, God forbid, if there's an emergency that takes place that requires-
Oh yeah, that happens.
Oh, don't tell me that.
No, I just meant in general, it can happen. So the island that we're on is about 20 minutes from the mainland. However, the camp operates a smaller speedboat, so that if something happened, if something happened at home and a parent had to claim their child quickly, we can zip them over quickly. The boat that we bring from the mainland with the students on it is like a giant ferry boat, so they have a smaller boat. Also, this is accessed by Marine Patrol, full ambulance, police, and fire. So if there were a severe medical emergency, that would happen in moments.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
That's okay.
So safety questions?
Safety first, that's our policy, always.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to again thank Mike and Anita for not only being here tonight, but for their commitment to resurrect this. It would be understandable after, after the trials and tribulations of this year, that they may have been exhausted, and I'm sure that they are. But their commitment to the program and to bring this back, and a lifeline for the program, as I've come to learn, is great, and so thank you for your commitment and dedication and planning, still for what will be not the norm, but a step towards, a step towards it, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you for being here, and thank you for this presentation. Before you go, is there a motion? Mr. Smaha?
I'll move to approve. I'll move to approve the 2021 band camp.
Is there a second? Mrs. Newhouse, all in favor? That is unanimous, so thank you, and thanks for doing all this work and keeping our kids safe. We're excited, we hear this is such a big piece of Wilmington, so when it came into the agenda, I said, what, really? I was like, oh, okay, you know, so. And then I saw the presentation, and I was like, okay, I can see, and you know, and who knows with vaccinations, you know, we may even be in a better space.
Exactly.
Come this time, so thank you, thanks for being here, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So we will head back to old business, 7A. Dr. Brand, that's the vote on the last day of school.
It is, thank you. Just very, very briefly, there is a memo that outlines this. We did speak about this previously at the April 7 meeting, when I shared with you what, based upon our projections and barring any unforeseen event, the last day of school is scheduled for Monday, June 21, 2021. It is traditional, typical that the committee takes a vote to formally approve that last day. And in addition to that, the proposal is to continue with recent tradition and have that last day as a half-day. And so it is recommended, it's seeking your vote of approval, and the motion is outlined there for your consideration.
Someone like to make a motion? Mr. Fennelly?
I move to approve the proposed last day of school, as well as approve it to be a half a day.
Is there a second? Mrs. Smaha, all in favor? That is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move back into new business. Item 8A is student assessment and academic planning updates. Mrs. Elliott?
Thank you, if I may, just to jump, no, no, just jump in real quick before Ms. Elliott does take over. 8A and 8B, as you may have seen, are actually combined, just to point that out within the presentation that follows here. And just very briefly, as a setup, I guess if you will, for this, this is, this information is here, this presentation is being delivered to you tonight for really a couple of reasons for you as a committee and for the community. First off, it's clear, it's become clear to us certainly over a number of meetings and conversations here in the room, that there is interest by members of the committee, and very understandably, around the work that our educators and our educational leaders have been doing around gathering information in an effort to assess where our students are at. Clearly and understandably, there's great concern held by many, everyone, around what the impact of this last year has had, perhaps directly or indirectly on students. And so we're trying to present that information in response to that call that we believe that you've shared with us on a number of occasions. Second, to provide not only you as a committee, but certainly the larger community, a little bit, and it is just a little bit, although there's a lot of information in here, a little bit of insight in terms of the work that our educators have been doing, and certainly will continue to do, to try and gather information that will help inform not only the more immediate future, i.e. the summer, but also into the fall. And thirdly, an effort to highlight the decision-making process and the factors around identifying students that will be recommended for and provided priority access to our summer school program, in which we've obviously spoken about something that is not so different at the middle and high school level, but certainly a new endeavor at the elementary level. And so it's our effort here tonight to try and weave all that together, and with complete transparency about the work that has been ongoing, and this is an effort to try and provide you with a 20,000-foot view of that. So with that, Ms. Elliott?
Thank you, Dr. Brand. And this evening, joining us by phone is Holly Van, shout out to our Elementary Language Arts Leader, who has helped along with others to compile a lot of this information, but she'll be presenting this evening, and she'll be speaking specifically to information regarding the dyslexia screener, and update around that committee's work as well. It's embedded within this presentation, however, in your packets this evening, there is an additional memo that she submitted for you to take a look at. So to get started, I just really want to give you a sense of an overview of what I'm hoping to accomplish through this presentation this evening. We'll be looking at what assessments did take place during this past school year, looking more broadly at a K-12 scope around what those assessments are, what, you know, what data do we have, and why did we collect the certain things that we did? What decisions did we make along the way to help us decide what data was important to collect this year? What did we learn from that data? This presentation will specifically go into detail around the K-5 data collection that we just recently completed during the May 5 CIT Day. So the beginning few slides, we'll talk more globally about K-12, and then we're going to dig deeper into the K-5 data as well. As Dr. Brand said, we'll talk a little bit more in-depth around the summer programming, and then our plans for assessment and intervention and support of students for next school year, and beyond that, and supports we may need in order to be able to do this kind of work. So I just, you know, no matter where you turn in social media, you're seeing these phrases out there, and the narrative is really pervasive, and, you know, in some situations, it's really painting a grim picture. So I wanted to just, in a way, I guess, put the elephant on the table, in that what we're talking about here is, we're going to really just look at, what does the data tell us, and what is our plan moving forward? But I will be perfectly honest with you and tell you that I didn't see any significant surprises in the data as I was looking at it, and so in some cases, I was pleasantly pleased, and in some cases, it confirmed what I expected. So I feel like this process overall of really looking at this data in the way we did at K-5 was actually a re- was actually a really overall positive experience. And I've heard some feedback from teachers as well that it was actually really helpful because they did it in conjunction with beginning to have conversations around the placement process, which we do every spring, and this, they said, felt like a much more streamlined approach. So I'll explain that more in a minute. So, but to give you just a sense overall of what the data that we actually collected this year and what we focused on, and this is really K-12. So throughout the course of the school year, there are periods of time when we typically administer assessments. At each one of those junctures this year, we paused and said, okay, what do we do now? We are, you know, we assess to the current situation, were we remote, were we hybrid? If we are to stop and stop our typical instruction to start administer these, administer assessments, how much time are we going to lose without kids in front of us for instruction? So we had to weigh every point along the way this year. Was it more important to have instructional time with our students or to collect data? And at some places, we thought it's far more important that we have, every moment we have with students in front of us, that we're instructing them and, and working with them. Particularly when we knew that that assessment data might not really paint the same picture it would if it were a typical year because of circumstances such as certain assessments really can't be administered remotely. You know, we had, you know, just the whole, the whole scenario overall looked a little bit different. So we did administer many of our assessments that we typically do, but not necessarily in the same timeline that we normally would. So when looking back at typically every September, might, we might administer, administer September, October, the benchmark assessment reading tool, we didn't do it in October this year. We did it in January through March. And a normal assessment window might be four weeks. Ours was 12. We had, you know, when we were in hybrid, we needed to spread it out to allow for teachers to have more time to, to, you know, assess students when they were in person. So there were a lot of things that were different. But we did administer the, the reading benchmark assessments. Our remote students and some of our in-person students were given the reading A to Z benchmark assessment, which was new for us, but it was more easily adapted to be able to be done remotely. So we don't have prior data around that particular assessment either. We used AmesWeb in our kindergarten this year consistently. Of course, the timeline was a little bit off. And, but for the most part, we did a lot of, teachers assigned a lot of projects and things that the students could do in a different way. So there were fewer quizzes and tests and more projects and assignments and written work and things like that. In different subjects, there were definitely pre and post-assessments, typical unit assessments at the elementary level. You know, there was math assessments at the end of every unit, foundations assessments at, at the end of the unit. And teachers were carefully collecting as much observational data about students as they could and looking at evidence of understanding that was collected through daily work samples. So measuring students against the standard at the elementary grades based on the demonstration that they understood that concept through the work submitted. So much of our decision-making was around what's the value of information that we can glean from that assessment and using that to determine if it was worth stopping instruction in order to, to administer it. We are still following suit with some of the summative and more formal assessments that we typically administer. As you know, MCAS, but of course with modifications this year. The access test for our English language learners is underway. AP advanced placement testing is happening at the high school level, and our stamp seal of biliteracy assessment, actually, I've heard really positive results that students are performing higher than they have traditionally on that assessment this year. So that's exciting news. So, but most of these assessments, we don't have the data at this point in time to be able to report, but I wanted to just bring up that we are continuing through with many of those different assessment tools that will be able to take that data when it's released, most likely this summer for most, and be able to really look at that for helpful planning for next year as well. So nothing, as I said before, has really been typical about this year. Our timelines have been off. Some tools, for example, the BASS reading assessment, they do not recommend you administer it remotely. So we tried to use that for our in-person students and, and adapted the RAS assessment. So varied instructional settings definitely impacted data collection. And again, we focused on prioritizing formative assessment whenever we had a choice because we needed the information that would drive instruction and allow teachers to know exactly where they needed to go next with their students. So there was, it was a thoughtful process at every juncture along the way. So I just wanted to, to point that out. But, so knowing that this information isn't actually apples to apples from any other typical year, we certainly wanted to figure out a way to capture really where we are as a district. So part of our, our, our approach to doing that this year, knowing that we had all these bits and pieces of information, but nothing that was really telling the whole story, was basically an approach of collecting what can be referred to as subjective student data. It is teacher data, that teachers were given the task to look at their students and to really give them a, you know, a rank, if you will, of, and you'll see these in just a moment, but similar to the report card performance levels, to identify the students who were performing above on grade level, slightly below grade level, or well below grade level in specific areas. So we looked at reading, writing, math, and social emotional needs of students as well. And when I mentioned earlier the placement process, each year, we do something similar to this, not so much with actually collecting this data in any way, but we do ask teachers to think about their student needs so that when we're making decisions around placement for the next school year, we are really thoughtful in making sure we have balanced classrooms, when we have, we understand where the greatest needs might be to provide the right staffing. So we do this process. But this year, we did it in a much more formal way so that we could look at this data more systemically. One of the things that I would be remiss if I didn't bring up, I, I had conversations with our high school, or secondary CTLs, our curriculum team leaders. We talked quite a bit about what did it look like this year for students in 6 through 12? And what did it look like, you know, as far as collecting that data and assessment? And basically, the conversation from them was that, you know, it looks different than at the elementary level because it's often, you know, semester-based courses. So they changed, the teachers changed their approach in what types of assignments and assessments they gave and collected. But, you know, and again, they talked more about it being project-based. But one of the things that they brought up, and I was feeling the same way, so I was grateful to have this conversation with them, was that sometimes they felt that there were unintended gains that emerged because of the experience that we were forced into this year. So would we ever do this deliberately? No. But if we can look for a silver lining, you know, in many situations, you know, students really demonstrated resilience and the ability to problem-solve and perseverance, and they needed to learn and develop self-management skills and adaptability. And one of the things that some of the high school folks said is that there were relationships, like friendships, that developed that they never would have anticipated because students were assigned to the same cohort. And now, or became a partner with a student who was remote, was now sort of the, the in-person student was their partner for making sure that the communication was happening and the assignments were there. So they wanted to bring that up as, you know, an unintended positive consequence that did come out of this. So again, certainly, you know, we always want to focus on building these competencies in our students. I don't recommend doing it through a pandemic in the future, but, but I think it's worth just at least acknowledging that some of these things did also take place this year. And related to that, I just wanted to share this slide. If you're familiar with the World Economic Forum, the Future of Jobs Report is released every so often, and in it, they identify the top 10 skills that the future workforce needs, projected by, you know, the business world really, or what is it that they, that employers are looking for in future employees for their companies. So interestingly enough, the categories that they've divided it into, there, it's hard to see on the screen this evening, but the fine print, but there are four categories that they've identified as critical to competencies that incoming workforce will need. And one is problem-solving, self-management, working with people, and technology use and development. So, and I've highlighted in red, outlined in red, that some of these 10 skills that were identified that really connect to those four categories that, that we certainly, students certainly had some practice with this year. So just another important, I think, piece to point out. Not at all to diminish the experience that we all went through and any academic struggles or, or learning loss that anyone may feel, but just looking at it from all perspectives. So as I mentioned, the overall performance data that we collected really looked at reading, writing, mathematics, and social emotional needs. And ratings were based on the assessment as of May 5th, when we actually sat to do this. And teachers were given a spreadsheet populated with their students in their class, and they were given the opportunity to go in and capture this information about their students. In addition to this specific data, there were columns developed by Jennifer White, our data specialist, who helped put this all together and pull this data together. So a huge thank you to her to do that. But the, some of the columns that we added to it were an opportunity for teachers to make a comment and to the next year's teacher. And this, so as they were filling it out, they were given the information that this would be then resorted next year and provided to the incoming teacher. So they would have this level of information from the prior year's teacher right at the start. So even though we plan to launch into full universal screening in, in the fall, it takes a little time to get that done, but teachers will be able to start with a really good snapshot of where students were, at least as of May 5th. So we looked at the two different rating scales. We used, one was the academic rating scale, similar to the report card. And then the SEL rating scale was developed with input from principals, really, around what we thought might make the most sense here. But teachers identifying that, you know, they had no concerns, minor supports for students managed in class, or significant supports managed in class, or that they required multi-tiered, school-based supports in this category. Again, this data is subjective, and we are well aware of that. It is not really based on hard assessment data, especially the SEL rating scale. It's really the teacher perception of how that child did this year. And you have to keep in mind that in some situations, remote classes, completely remote classes, a child's behavior, you know, might look very different in person than it does sitting at home, you know, good or bad. But, so it, so it was more, it's hard to assess some of their, you know, their skills in that realm when it is remote as well. So we recognize that this is definitely subjective data. However, given the hurdles that we've had to jump through this year, we felt that this was at least a good snapshot of where we are based on our teacher perception. And we do know that, you know, the teachers, I think, really have a good handle on where their students are and, and more so than any one individual data point. So looking at all of it collectively and in, using all of the assessment data they had to inform this decision, we felt would at least give us some information to go on. So I'll move through the, the actual data pretty quickly, but I wanted to tell you that this is broken up into different sections. This first section is analysis by grade level. So we're looking at how did each of the different grade levels do in reading, writing, mathematics, and social emotional needs based on the teacher perception data? But before we do, I want to give you some context. Typically, this pyramid, this triangle, is, is a tool that we use through the response to intervention method, or RTI. And it's, it's a guideline that we, we think it's a preventative model, if you will. And the goal is that if we're providing solid core instruction in tier one, that's for all of our students, just good differentiation by teachers, and every student gets the, basically, the same instruction. That's tier one. That's the majority of what happens in day-to-day in a classroom. Typically, through that RTI model, it's about 80% of our students who respond really well to that core instruction, and that's enough good teaching that they will thrive. Tier two is really looking at targeted small group instruction. So it might be a step beyond, obviously, small group instruction happens in tier one, but in tier two, it's a little bit more targeted and focused. And ideally, we have about 15% of our students in this model, I mean, in this tier. And I should mention that part of the goal of this type, looking at tiers like this, tier one, tier two, and tier three, is, is that it's a preventative measure in helping to make sure students get what they need in hopes of addressing those concerns so that they don't elevate to a place where they eventually need special education. Obviously, if a student has a disability, they tend to move through these tiers pretty quickly, and we're able to tease out the, the support that's being provided in tier one and tier two isn't, isn't substantial enough for them to make gains, and they need specialized instruction. And then the third tier here is the roughly 5%, and oftentimes, these students are going through the IST process. The, you know, they may be being discussed with the team, the child study team, to look and see, is this child, should we be doing additional testing on this child to determine if there is a special education eligibility here? So typically, the student, and students who are identified and have an education, an IEP, an Individualized Education Plan, oftentimes are not necessarily, depending on how the district uses this tool, but are not always considered as part of this because this, this pyramid. So those, that percentage might actually be, they've already gone through this process, and we have identified what their needs are. We have a plan in place for them, supports and structures in place for them, and we know exactly what they need. So this, so, but there could very well be students on IEPs in tier three. So it depends on how the district is looking at that perception of whether or not it's the numbers and the percentages, whether they're part of that or not.
May I ask a question at this juncture?
Sure, of course.
Thank you. Only because I think this has been in preparation, knowing that this would be coming. So at what point would staff members implement the D cap? Because I think it's a very underutilized tool that staff yearly is made aware of.
Great question.
That, that doesn't get applied.
Sure.
Then we have surprises that show up in mid-year, and parents are like, what do you mean, my child's failing? And so how is that implemented within this tier?
Tier one. D cap belongs in tier one. It's their general things that anyone can use to help meet student needs where they are. It could also be in tier two, but it should be in tier one. And just as a side note, we are working, we are in the process of revising the D cap and working to make it not a document that sits on a shelf, but to make it an interactive document that will allow teachers to go in and click on, if there's an identified concern, click on the link, give them activities and resources. So it's being built behind the scenes as we speak, and, but we will be continuing that. The work subsided this year. It started the end of last year. It was on hold. We've reconvened, and we're working with Emily Pat from SEEM as our consultant, upper behavior specialist consultant, to help with that piece. I'm sorry, the inclusion specialist. And so she's helping and working, and we'll be reconvening that team to get that up and running.
Will there also be a pathway for parents to, I mean, I think that is a collaborative discussion to get to that point, but for parents to perhaps generate that too?
Sure. I don't see why not, and I think it'll be a public document that we'll be sharing for everyone to have access to.
I think it's really imperative for any parents who may have concerns with regards. Thank you.
Of course, absolutely. So way more to come around the intervention process and RTI. However, I just wanted to share this to give you some context. Right now, currently, we have, the state of Massachusetts and Wilmington is right in the same cusp, if you will, have about 18% of our population identified as students with disabilities on IEPs. So just keep that in mind as you're looking at our percentages. When we collected data about all students, it was about all students. It wasn't separating out students that we already are, know are identified that need support. It wasn't separating out students that we already are, know are identified that need support or have a plan. This is the whole population, um, you know, every, all of our students, um, collectively. So here you can just see, and I'll just do a quick explanation of the coding so you understand. But, you know, we're looking at the three main subject areas here, reading, writing, and math. And we're looking at kindergarteners only on this slide. Um, the blue is considered above grade level from the teacher perception. The green is on grade level. Approaching grade level is yellow and well below grade level is red. We have the ability to dig deep into that data to look at who those students are. And we've already begun that, but we're in the process of doing that to look and see, um, are those students who are red, are, is there anybody that fell in the red that we have, we have not already, um, determined eligible or has a plan or has the supports in place that they need? We're also looking closely at the yellow students just to make sure that we, um, see, we, that we're, that none of these are surprises to us. Um, so this is actually really helpful data for us. Um, again, some of it is not surprising, some of it was pleasantly surprising. Um, knowing that our kindergarten, um, hours were reduced significantly this year, but our kids were in person. I would of course expect the writing to be the lowest. Um, you know, it, writing almost always lags behind reading, um, performance, at least in the early grade spans. So, um, this was, um, pretty much what I expected to see. I was actually pleasantly surprised that the math was as strong as it was. Um, so that is exciting. Um, looking at the, um, social emotional needs, we, I put this on a separate slide because, um, we have a different performance scale that we used. So overall, in this case, you know, blue meaning no concerns, green minor supports managed in class, yellow significant supports managed in class, and red, um, requires multi-based, a tier, multi-tiered school-based support. So overall, that, um, I think paints a pretty good picture of where we are with, um, our social emotional needs based on teacher perception data. Grade one, you can see we're following suit, reading, writing, math, um, and, um, not significant surprises here. Um, exciting to see so many of students reading, um, above grade level. Uh, that's a high percentage, which is exciting, you know, coupled with the, um, students who are performing on. I will tell you that we are very fortunate to have, uh, 10.75 FTE equivalent of reading support in the district, um, across K to five. So we are, I feel like we are in a really good place having the reading support we need. I don't think that this would be significantly, um, let me rephrase that. I think in a typical year, we would see some, something similar to this, obviously a little bit more positive. But, um, but every year, we have that, that level of students who are going to have, you know, the, um, who are approaching or who are below. So, um, again, I feel like we are in a good place as far as the literacy goes to be able to use the resources we have to be able to really support students. And part of the information that we're gathering here will be really thinking about, um, uh, looking at where our staffing is to support students. So where is the greatest need, which, which grade levels have the most need, that kind of thing. And again, the grade one SEL looks very similar, um, to the kindergarten. Grade two, um, here we are, you know, looking again at reading, writing, and math. Can see those similar. Again, the writing is always, um, you know, tends to lag behind. But I will also say that writing during a pandemic is a really difficult subject to teach in the sense that, um, if kids are hybrid and are at home, it is, you know, it's assigned writing activities. And students in the early grades need explicit instruction in writing. They need to go through that writing process with, um, explicit modeling and guided practice and, um, conferring with their teacher in small group. So a pandemic did certainly did not lend itself to that structure. So, um, I, it will definitely be an area that we will be focusing on. And we will be shifting our literacy professional development next year. Um, it, it was already the plan, but to really address Writer's Workshop as well. So that will be, um, definitely, um, work that we'll need to do next year. Grade two SEL is pretty similar. And grade three, um, so, uh, you know, similar in a lot of ways. Um, not significant surprises. And obviously, in the writing, there's a greater need there. And when you're looking at, um, grade three is an interesting, um, grade span for so many reasons because developmentally, they're, you know, moving from learning to read to reading, um, to learn. And the writing expectations increase, um, exponentially as we get up into that third grade piece. So, um, that will definitely be an area that we'll need to be looking at those students in fourth grade to make sure that they have the, um, supports in place and the, the foundational skills they need to really be able to ensure that we're solid, um, before those expectations continue to build. The SEL piece. Uh, grade four. And grade five. So, you know, like, as I was mentioning previously, we can look at so much information from this data. And after going through this experience, um, and we did it out of necessity, uh, collecting the data in this way out of necessity. However, conversations that we've had, um, so far about it is, it, people would like to continue and repeat this next year because they feel like it's really valuable. And for us, for planning purposes, it's really helpful because we have all of the demographic information in this data collection that allows us to look at, sort this by students who are currently receiving reading support. Um, so we can go through and look at the teacher ratings and compare it to how many of them are already receiving reading support and quickly find out, oh, these two children were rated as not quite, um, you know, approaching, but not quite there. And let's get our reading specialist to take a look and go, go meet with them and, and double check and see how they're doing and see what they can do to support them. So it's really helpful to have this, um, data. So we do plan to continue to do this next year, hopefully. Um, and it'll be interesting to see what that data collection looks like next year, you know, looking at it in a consistent way. Um, so we will use this in multiple ways, um, looking at, sorting it through different lenses, gender, um, students with disabilities, students on 504 plans, looking at our English language learner population so we can find some trends and, you know, ask those questions and then use the data to help us, um, get those answers. So the next set of slides just switches to looking at it by subject area. And this is really helpful for, again, our staffing and planning for next year. So when we look across at reading, um, this is kindergarten through grade five, looking at our overall reading. And this is helpful when you can look at it this way. And I've just circled in, in the black those three different grade levels right now. Um, in thinking that, um, you know, they are right now showing the greatest percentage of students who are either approaching or well below. Um, and knowing that those students are going to move up to the next grade level. So, um, wanting to make sure that our support in, um, in, in every grade level is sufficient, but really knowing that we're going to have, um, we are going to, likely going to have a larger group of students who need some academic support in grade one, in grade, um, three, in grade five. Those, you know, in, I'm sorry, in grade four, looking at how those students will move. Um, so it's helpful to look at it from this aspect. Whoops. And then, um, as I mentioned, Holly Banashevist is on the line with us tonight. And she did a lot of work really, um, compiling the literacy benchmark data. So every year that, um, assessment is administered. And this year, as I mentioned earlier, you know, we administered, administered it for many of our students. However, um, some also got a different assessment. So we did the best we could to really look at what information we did have. But I will turn it over to Holly here to talk a little bit more about the literacy benchmark data that was collected.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. Um, the benchmark data is similar to what we saw in the perception data. The benchmark data was collected and used for the purpose of knowing where our readers were compared to grade level expectations, what skills they were strong in, and what skills required additional focus in our instruction. Another purpose of the assessment was to collect additional data on students who were already identified as below the current grade level expectations and to also determine whether any new students fell into that category. Based on the benchmark data, any necessary adjustments were made to meet the needs of the students who were identified. And appropriate supports were either continued, modified, or put into place. Of course, this is our standard practice and not unique to this school year. Students who were below grade level expectations during that winter benchmarking window are currently in the process of being assessed at this time. Though the benchmark window has not closed yet, teachers are already reporting that students have made nice gains since the winter benchmark window. And all of this data collected this year will give us a really informed starting place for, for our universal screening next year. Christine?
Great, thank you. And, um, to continue on, you can see the writing across the board. Um, and again, you know, um, our fourth and fifth grade and actually grade one, um, which was, I was actually pleasantly surprised. I thought grade one, um, would need, you know, look like as if they would need additional support or more support. But they actually did better than I anticipated. And keeping in mind that this was data based on May. So we still had seven or eight weeks left of school at the time that, um, to be thinking about that seven or eight weeks of in-person learning every day, which is so exciting. Um, so this is our writing piece and then, um, mathematics as well. So, um, you know, obviously, our teachers are doing a really great job differentiating needs for students in mathematics. Um, and they are, um, you know, are, are, they're, the ratings here are demonstrating that the students are doing well. And SEL needs, um, again, um, one of the important things to note is that as a district, as we've mentioned here at this committee before, we have purchased Panorama and it is in the works being set up right now. And I believe we're hoping for an early June or sometime in June assessment window for our students. Um, so we will be collecting that universal screening data about our students' competencies. Um, and then we will have that baseline data to, to start with. So we, as soon as we have that data, we will of course couple it with, um, the perception data that we do have. Um, so we're excited about that because it will allow us to do regular progress monitoring and well, as well. But, um, for now, we are looking here and, you know, I've highlighted grade three, current grade three and grade five, um, as areas that, you know, we want to keep a close eye on and provide that support as they move on as well. And to dig deeper when we do have that universal data, um, coming through, um, you know, through Panorama to really look at that and see if this does match what we are seeing here. But overall, feeling like it's in a pretty good place. So a lot of information, um, and, you know, now it's all about addressing the plan, right? So, you know, um, one of the, we need to be thinking about this in a systemic way. So not, what do we do tomorrow and then say, okay, we've done it. But really thinking about it from the summer perspective, from the next year. Building the systems in place so that this is an ongoing, um, support for students. And to be thinking about this as a multi-year approach to, um, addressing some of the gaps that have developed for some of our students. So, um, we'll start by talking a little bit about the summer programming. And, um, we talked, uh, a little bit last time about it. And since then, there've been a few more developments related to it. Um, and, um, I'll give you a quick update. But basically, we are, um, basically, our typical extended school year program will still run for any student who, um, is eligible for that program in the summer. And that is the program that is, um, specifically designed for those students. So what we're talking about here with our summer academic programming is different than that. Um, and that is really, um, specialized instruction designed for those students. So for students who are not a part of that program, uh, what we are doing is offering, um, it's a, um, program that will run three hours a day, four days a week for the month of July. Um, students who participate in it would be, be the expectation that they would attend all four weeks. So, um, it's not a week by week sign up. It is, uh, you sign up for the program. So it is those four weeks and the dates are listed here. Uh, but it'll be one of our, one or two of our school buildings. We're still working on the location based on identifying other programs that are running as well and space. But students will, we will do everything in our power to be able to accommodate the number of, um, families that want to participate. So rather than us sending out, um, invitations, I've decided that we will open up an application portal and that will go out tomorrow. And if we, um, it will help us in planning and knowing exactly how many families are actually interested. If I can find the staffing, I will, um, do everything I possibly can to find enough staff to meet the demand. Um, but if I cannot, then we'll use the academic data and the data that we've collected here to really look at an overall composite score, if you will, for each student and, and determine that level of need. I'll work with building principals also to look at that list of students that if we are making those difficult decisions, um, to make sure that we are making sound decisions about who is eligible in. Um, but at this point, it's, um, it's a difficult process without knowing exactly how many families are interested to be able to secure staffing. So, um, we'll open it up through an email that will go out to families tomorrow with a flyer explaining everything about the program and the opportunity for them to, um, fill out their application that they're interested in it. Um, MJ?
I'm sorry. Can I ask you, uh, my question to that, so how do you prioritize those students most at risk that could benefit from the summer program and yet open it up for applications? Would, would it not serve to maybe, granted, I know what everyone is survey, survey tied probably, but like said, out of survey just to find out preliminary what families may be interested? So you have an idea on setting, especially with staffing? Because, you know, my concern is because this is through the public schools, um, I want to make sure that it's, it's equitable and available to all students who may benefit.
Yep.
And I, I certainly understand the challenges with regards to this. And it's a new venture we've never yet had to explore.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I, I do, would like to see that with this, that we step up on the most strongest footing um, to, to serve our students and not have it be a, a waitlist situation. Because I, I, I do have concerns taken into consideration with pandemic and all that, you know, fate for our, our students. And, you know, especially those who may most benefit from it, kind of thing. And that's kind of what I'm trying to, I'm sorry, not to interrupt your presentation.
And I, I think actually that is why we cha- I changed the, the, um, approach. Because at the last meeting, I had talked about, um, looking at our data and mailing out invitations to folks and then waiting for them to RSVP back, RSVP back. And then looking at, okay, the next tier of students. And that process, I feel, um, um, would be difficult in, in time, timing. And, and for us to really be able to secure staff in a timely way. I want to do everything we can. If, if there are, um, you know, let's say there are, um, 40 third graders that are interested in participating, um, and maybe only 20 fourth graders, then I want to really look at, I can provide additional staffing for the grade where the demand is and not automatically just bring in and hire t- staff at certain grades. So in a sense, the survey that I'll be putting out there tomorrow, which is an application, if you will, um, it's a, it's a Google form survey, will give me an indication of exactly who is interested in participating.
Okay.
And then I can do the behind the scenes work to say, yes, I have staff for, um, to meet the needs of everybody here or I'm short a second grade teacher. I'm going to post and get a second, another second grade teacher.
Great.
So I'm trying to do that in order to accommodate as many people as we can.
It's just the accessibility that, you know, for, especially because this is, is through the
Yes.
public schools.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. So, um, families should keep an eye out for that probably tomorrow afternoon. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sure.
Before we just go too much further beyond the data itself, I just have a quick question about that. So can you clarify, when you indicate teacher perception data? I apologize if you explained this and I didn't quite understand it. But so that data is, there is some objective measure that goes into that, correct? So like, uh, uh, pre and post assessment, so like, uh, test scores and, um, some of the, like the BaaS and some of those. So teachers aren't just sort of looking at their roster and those. So teachers aren't just sort of looking at their roster and saying, I think she's all set, I think he's okay. Her, her, or his, sort of putting kids into those categories is informed by objective data, correct? It's not just, because I think that word teacher perception is a little bit confusing perhaps for, for parents who are saying, well, I want to know that my child, like, so that's my first part of my question. My second part of the question is, when a parent receives this application tomorrow, which I really support your decision to sort of adjust that, that process, if a parent is sort of like, I don't know, like, I don't know where my kid falls in that, should they be reaching out to their teacher to say, you know, so I've got this application and I just don't know whether to, because I anticipate some kids are going to say, no, I don't want to go to summer school. But if parents, and so parents are going to be in this like bind a little bit, like, should I or shouldn't I? So how do you, what do you recommend caregivers do if they're not sure how to make that decision?
So, regarding your first question, yes, all of those data points that are, all of the assessment tools that we talked about in the beginning in the first few slides, including projects that are assigned with rubrics that teachers are using to evaluate them, including the observational data. So it's a compilation of formal assessments, informal assessments, and all of that other information that is used to, for the teacher to be able to make that, that decision around which performance level to assign to a student. So yes, thank you for bringing that up. That's a really good point. As far as the summer programming goes, I think that, you know, I, I hope that there aren't significant surprises and that during the report card period and parent conferences, or if teachers have indicated any concern to families, that they, that would not be new to them at this point in the year with the school year almost over. So I do think that, you know, a majority of families might already have a sense if their child is struggling or may be just observing that they, you know, are reluctant about school or whatever it might be. So, but if families do have concerns or questions, they could certainly, you know, check in via email with their, with the teacher. But I think that the bigger decision is really one that caregivers need to make about what do I think is best for my child this summer. I would not claim that coming to four weeks of nine to twelve summer school is going to advance them well beyond their peers in any way. It's a great engaging opportunity to solidify skills, to practice things that they were already introduced to this year and to have a structured environment. And for many students, that will be really, really beneficial in itself. So if, you know, so it's really, I think, looking at your own child and making that decision about will this program, which is going to be structured as ninety, roughly ninety minutes of literacy instruction and ninety minutes of math with snack break in the middle and hands-on activities and read aloud and all of that. So very similar to a typical day for math and literacy block. If that's something that students, they feel that their child would benefit from, then they should certainly apply, you know. But I think it's, they certainly could ask that question, but I think the answer will likely be, it certainly won't hurt any child unless you feel that their time would be better spent somewhere else, you know, doing something else, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I have a question to follow up. So just so I understand, families will be able to apply. Will, should families have expected to have had a conversation with the classroom teacher at this point? Where the classroom, so I understand the report card and so this would, I would imagine this would be an ongoing conversation. But would this be something like, I think this would really benefit your child and here's why? Or is this none of that?
No, we had talked about that at the last meeting. That was the initial thinking that we would do it by invitation in that way, but then, you know, or, you know, by reaching out specifically to families, but where do you draw that line? And how do you decide, you know, how far you invite and how many staff we should hire? So it just seemed more logical to figure out what the need was prior to, you know, setting that line. So, you know, it doesn't mean, so we will only use that data of the most at-risk students or the neediest students if we have difficult decisions to make because we can't get the staffing.
Okay. And then my follow-up to that is looking at the, this curriculum, it's not really necessarily an intervention of any sort. So, we're not doing some diagnostic assessment. In some literacy clinics, there would be a diet, there would be an assessment at the beginning. The intervention would be very specific to that need. So we're working specifically on this phonics skill.
Correct.
And then we're doing this practice with the writing and the reading to support all. That's not happening. This is sort of, I don't want to say, I don't want to use the word generic, but this is a bundle that's going to sort of hit many things, but not necessarily a particular need of a student who actually is well below grade level.
Correct. It is, the goal of this program is to reinforce, review and reinforce grade level standard skills that were introduced, give students an opportunity to practice them some more. It will, it will be a little bit more global and not as targeted. However, in the fall, when we are developing supports for students, those are very specific and targeted to each individual student's needs. Of course, our, our teachers will do everything they can this summer to really meet the needs of the students sitting before them. But the program overall, it won't be, you know, there won't be specific assessment tools administered at the beginning and end of it. It is really designed to be an engaging experience to provide additional reinforcement and practice and to, to help eliminate some of the summer regression that can often happen.
Thank you.
So, again, this particular slide just talks a little bit about the, what the structure of that day would look like. In addition to the ELA and literacy, there are SEL components embedded within those and a family guide is provided that provides guidance and support for caregivers with social emotional activities and daily physical and mindfulness resources. And it's an, there's an online component to it as well. So when this program ends at the end of July, families will still have access through the end of August for all of the online resources. We'll set that up with some potential suggested things that they could be doing using the online resources for the remainder of the summer to help keep their students engaged. So as I mentioned, an email will be coming out tomorrow with the link for people to basically apply, which is identify their interest in participating and we will look at the, the need and then we will respond to people as soon as possible. So if I know I have a teacher secured, the, you know, then I will go in and respond to that class, that group of students saying that you, you have a spot secured and that you will be in the program. So we'll turn that around as quickly as we possibly can. Okay, so, summer school for grades, the secondary grades six through twelve have a similar approach to what they've typically done in other years. I don't believe it ran last summer, but, obviously, but, but it'll be similar to how they've run it in other years, with the exception of, I believe it usually has run in July and into August. We are making longer, a little bit longer sessions to get the forty-five hours in for each course, full course. But we are doing it just in the month of July so that if families are traveling or our students are working or whatever it might be, August would not be impacted. So, we will try to run two sessions. And again, all of this is based on what needs we need, which classes we'll need to run based on student needs. So we'll be working on that to determine that. But right now, we're looking at a morning and an afternoon session. So seven forty-five to ten forty-five, eleven fifteen to two fifteen. A student could potentially take one course in the morning and one in the afternoon and, and get two courses done over the course of the summer session. Or a student may only take a morning session or afternoon session depending on the need. We will be, there will be no charge for this program this summer. Typically, there's a tuition, a fee charge. The purpose of this will be obviously for credit recovery is what typically it's offered for. However, it is open to any student free of charge. If they want to solidify skills, review a course, feel like they passed but didn't really do as well as they would have liked, they'll have an opportunity to, you know, revisit that coursework. So it will be open to any student, free of charge. We are in the process of hiring a program coordinator. They were interviewed this week. So we'll be, once that's determined, we'll be able to communicate all that information out to families in a timely manner. We're still ahead of schedule compared to the information that's typically shared for secondary summer school, based on the memos that I found that usually is, the end of May, we're communicating that information. So we should be on track to be able to communicate that out to families as well. So, the assessment plan. So that was the summer piece of what we're offering this summer. And then we're moving into looking at the fall. What is it that we need to do in the fall in order to be able to take the information we have and continue to, to build that picture? So, you know, knowing, having students behind grade level or approaching a grade level is not new. This is a concept we deal with every single school year. So we, but there's obviously an increased sense of urgency knowing that, you know, that we had less time with students this year. So we will be administering a universal screening process in literacy and math, starting in September, early on, right away. And we will be using Envision Math or the Diagnostic Screener and we are investigating, they have a universal screener that's just been released as well, that is a potential that we might be able to add on to our existing program to help us with that as well, and that's digital. We will be continuing on with the Benchmark Assessment System, the Reading Assessment for K to five, and Ames Web Literacy Assessment. We'll be actually expanding the Ames Web because we'll, we'll talk about that in just a minute as well, but, and administering our dyslexia screener for grades K through three. So that universal screening will take place regularly throughout the course of the school year. So, you know, thinking about the screener piece of it is, everybody gets that assessment. It's usually a quick look at how they're performing. And then we can sort of pull out, if you will, students who need further identification and further diagnostic assessment to help inform what's going on with those students and the supports that they'll need. And then the progress monitoring is, is, will be happening regularly throughout the intervals as well, once those plans are set up for students, to determine if the interventions that we're providing are actually effective. So rather than just doing the same thing all year long and giving extra help, it's really looking at targeted interventions that are specific to the student needs and then measuring the growth. Are we closing that gap? Is the trend line closing so that the student will be at grade level? And if not, what do we need to change? Is it the group size? Is it the instructional approach? Is it the materials? Is it, you know, what, trying to discern what the issue might be and making adjustments there.
And this, this is for high-need students as well? Look, they will get all assessments and all the inclusion classrooms and, okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Sure. And then, again, we'll look at end-of-year assessments in the same way through that universal screening process and, you know, also collecting the typical end-of-year data as well. So, we will definitely need to, we will have the capacity and the need to really get concrete data next year about our students. And, but, you know, and then pair it with some of this other data that we've collected as well. So, we feel like we'll have those tools and what we need in order to do that next year, starting off right at the beginning of the school year. And then that will help us plan for subsequent years as well. So I am going to ask Holly to jump back on and talk a little bit about our, the dyslexia screener piece. And I mentioned it briefly on the previous slide, that that is something that we'll be including, but Holly has been pivotal in working with a subcommittee that's been looking at this for the last year or so. So I will turn it over to Holly to give you the update here.
Great. Thanks, Christine. I know you've all had an opportunity to read my report, but I will give a brief overview of the process of selecting a dyslexia screener along with our next steps. So a committee has been actively reviewing our early literacy assessments with a particular focus for dyslexia, or screening for dyslexia risk. So we have Ames Web in place, which is a DECE approved dyslexia screener. We were initially concerned that the subtest within Ames Web would not provide the best predictor of dyslexia risk. However, Ames Web has recently added both the RAN, which stands for Rapid Automatic Naming, and SHAWIS, which now makes it a robust tool to evaluate dyslexia risk. Ultimately, the committee selected Ames Web because it can be used in grades pre-K to three. Not all components in pre-K, but certainly portions of it that are really helpful. Also, Ames Web provides an in-depth student profile, will allow for earlier identification of students who might be at risk, and it is an assessment our teachers are familiar with. I do want to add that the committee reviewed several potential screeners. One of them was Early Bird, which was developed by leading expert in developmental cognitive neuroscience and dyslexia, Dr. Nadine Gab. In fact, during the nineteen-twenty school year, we were fortunate enough to work with the Early Bird team to participate in the validation phase of the screener. After the validation work was completed and the committee was able to see the published Early Bird screener, we found that there were many valuable components embedded within Early Bird, including built-in educator professional development and recommendations for targeted intervention. The one drawback is that Early Bird will only be available for kindergarten next year. The following year, they will be expanding into other grades, but currently, Early Bird is not quite ready to meet our needs pre-K to three, especially given the scope of data we are looking to collect following this year of learning during a pandemic. However, throughout next year, we will evaluate Ames Web and closely watch Early Bird's growth to determine which one best meets our needs, whether that means continuing with Ames Web or adopting Early Bird in the future. The committee is currently planning an effective rollout that includes training pre-K to three, refining our twenty-one, twenty-two assessment schedule, adding additional RTI resources for students requiring targeted support in phonemic awareness, and continuing our ongoing review process to ensure we are collecting the best possible data for early identification of not only dyslexia risk, but general reading difficulties as well. Christine?
Great. Thank you, Holly. Any questions regarding this before we move on? Great. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
So, the next piece is really looking at staffing. So, as I had mentioned earlier in the presentation, you know, I feel like I was very excited when I came to the district and I had an opportunity actually to meet with Holly and the team of reading specialists early on. And I was so excited to see that we had so many highly qualified people working, supporting the, the students' needs in reading in the district here. I was actually a bit surprised, though, that we didn't have that same complement of staff that support math instruction in the district. And so that, I, I kind of took a step back. I will tell you that initially, I was really concerned about what this math data might, might show. I've actually pleasantly surprised at how well our students are doing in the district with the math program and with the support that they're getting from their math teachers. However, I do believe that it makes sense that we do think about increasing staffing for, in, in, for the grades K to five area, to provide staff that are dedicated to really providing math intervention for students. We know that in order to close those gaps and to help students reach their full potential, they need supplemental instruction that's targeted, not just, you know, the core instruction, right? So the ability to then have something explained to them in a different way or a different approach or very targeted to what their needs are. So, that is one area that I am recommending that I think it would be beneficial for the district regardless of the pandemic. But coming out of a pandemic, I think it'll be important to have additional staff in place. So I am proposing that, that we will look at what that staffing need might be and come back to this committee with more information. We do recognize that we have potential capacity through grant funding, through the ESAR grant, related to supporting students. grant funding, through the ESER grant, um, related to supporting students. Um, so that may be a potential funding source that we would look at. So we will be coming back at a future, um, time to talk a little bit more about this, but I just wanted to put it on your radar for today.
Just be mindful to, in those discussions, as you work towards this, um, I know a lot of discussions keep coming up about enrollment. So that's another aspect that I think would base the argument as to why this is so vital to our kids.
Absolutely. That's a good point. Thank you. Um, so, and then just other needs. Um, time for collaboration. So when we're collecting all this data, it doesn't do any good if it's sitting in my spreadsheet in my office and I'm the only one analyzing it. And for, in order for this to, um, really take hold and, um, and to be effective and to use this data effectively, there needs to be an opportunity for teachers to look at the data together, make instructional, um, decisions together about what makes sense around curriculum and pacing and around providing support, um, to look at student work together and to have those conversations. So, um, time is always, um, a struggle to find the time to be able to do that. So we may need to look at, um, you know, potentially providing sub-coverage for a team of first grade teachers, for example, to come out for an hour, an hour and a half in an afternoon to have the time to do that if we can't find other times within the existing structures that we have to do that. It'll be, I think, more important than ever next year that we have these regularly structured times in order to look at this information and use it so that we're not just going from, from assessment period to assessment period without actually making strategic targeted changes between periods that, um, can have a positive impact. And finally, assessment tools. Um, and so we feel that we are in a pretty good place with the resources we need in order to assess, but if we find that we're missing information, we may be looking at, um, what other additional assessment tools we might need. So overall, we feel like, um, we're in a good place to be able to provide the, the supports and interventions that we need for students. Ideally, it would be nice to have some math support to do that. Um, and we think that we can also look at, um, you know, look at our existing reading specialist and hope that we can maybe have some of that focus be around writing as well to support students next year. So, um, I am open to any additional questions or comments from the committee?
Other questions or comments? Mr. Raxdale?
Uh, so I want to go, go back a little bit to the, um, sort of gauging the interest in the summer school and helping families understand how much benefit they might need from it. So in a lot of the slides that, uh, that you showed, we had the breakdown into students that were, you know, well below grade level and those approaching grade level. Um, is it, is it fair to say that parents of students whose children fall within that, let's start with the well below grade level, um, that, would they be aware of this? I mean, should, I mean, I'm hoping that they, the answer is yes. Maybe I should just move more specifically. How have they been made aware of that? Is that something that, there's an expectation that for the students that we collected data on that are well below grade level, that this information has been, um, conveyed to parents so that they can make decisions, uh, for example, for the summer? How, how are we doing that?
So students who are well below grade level, um, unless there are, I, I highly doubt, and, you know, we can look at this data, but that there would be any exceptions to this rule. But those students are typically students who have already been identified, who are, um, receiving support either most likely, um, on an individualized education plan. Again, this was all students here. So the, if we had students who were not already identified as, um, on, on an education plan, um, then they would at least be likely receiving reading support or would have had, there, there would be conversations, um, because that information would have been already relayed on a report card. So if a student was receiving a one on a report card, um, and there wasn't a conversation around that earlier in the school year, I'd be shocked. So I think that the well below will be relatively, the families will have a sense of who that, who those students are. Approaching, I want to, um, talk a little bit about approaching because it, it's a wide range of what that means. So, um, approaching in reading could be, you know, in first grade, for example, they read, um, guided reading levels in, you know, A through, um, I or J. So a student might be one level, might be an H instead of an I. Um, and so that could be approaching, um, from one teacher's perspective of where they are, which means with a little bit of support, they're, they're going to take off. Or it could be that they're a little further behind than that. So there's definitely a variation there. Um, I think that, um, any student who is, falls in that approaching range, it would be really beneficial for them to participate in the program if they're available to this summer and, and families can get them there. Um, so I, I think that the, um, you know, if they, if a family, um, you know, has concerns based on, um, how their child's performed this year, based on conversations with a teacher, a report card, or any of that, they should certainly, they could certainly reach out to ask for more information. If families want, um, you know, I, so I, I, I'm cautious in the sense that I don't want this to turn into parent conferences for all of our teachers who, who are working so hard right now to get everything done. If a family has a question, certainly reach out to a parent, but, um, but I don't see it feasible to have individual conferences set up to talk about this placement. So I would rather field those calls based on the data I've collected myself. If somebody is concerned or really questioning whether or not it would make sense for their child to participate. Um, so I'd be happy to field those calls as well.
Can I just clarify, I just, uh, cause there's a theme here, I think, for some of the questions. And just two, two things. One, the, the, uh, the adjustment to the mass mailing, if you will, of reaching out to all families is, is in the interest of time. Uh, and as, as Ms. Ellie and I talked about it, given where we're at, given the staffing challenges that you've heard us touch upon, or concerns, rather, I shouldn't say challenges. Uh, it was thought that doing, uh, that outreach in one fell swoop as opposed to two phases, uh, would just expedite the process as a whole. But those students that are being, if you will, recommended, I don't see there to be any issue with us all, whether it be the teacher and/or the principal, um, making that outreach to connect with the family to say, look, it, you know, we, this has gone out to everybody, but we would strongly encourage you to think about registering. I think that there's an ease to do that for, for both and still move this forward. Um, so I just want to make sure that that's clear. Uh, we, we can still take care of that and will, uh, through a couple of different means.
Okay. Um, but is it, and just to follow up on that quickly. So, but is it fair to say that, uh, through, you know, report cards and general communication from teachers and the parent conferences that have already happened, that parents should be fairly well informed of, you know, where it should not be necessarily, it wouldn't be a surprise to parents to learn that like, that their child fell into that approaching category based on report cards, conferences, and general communication from teachers? That that would be at least our expectation, that that would be clear?
Correct. I believe so. And keep in mind, approaching, it was in May. There may be many students who are on grade level in June who were approaching in May because they are close to where they need to be. So, um, I, I, I do not see, um, honestly, approaching as an alarming place to be, but I do agree with what you just said.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Mr. Smol?
Yeah. One of the things that I just, I mean, I had a couple of different things, but I guess I wanted to, this sort of came up as I was, as I was looking at this too and thinking about some of the subjective nature, um, of some of the data and just being aware of any sort of implicit biases that might be, that might be there. I know you had, there was a slide where we talked about gender, but I would say race and socioeconomic status and that stuff too, especially when you have teachers using, you know, some formative, you know, like hard data, but then also giving them an opinion on it. I just think that we need to be, you know, aware of any of those things. I think that's, uh, an important part to just, I guess, be aware of. Um, and so I guess, when I, when I first took a look at some of these numbers, um, you know, I, it sort of took me, I was definitely like taken aback, I think, by, especially when I look at kindergarten, I see math and it's like close to 20% of kindergarten students are, you know, uh, well below grade level. That seems to me to be like a really big number, not knowing really anything about what those numbers typically, uh, look like. Um, but it's reassuring to hear you say that those numbers are not necessarily big alarming numbers. Those are sort of what you might expect. Um, you know, maybe even in a typical year. Would you say that? Like, even in a typical year, that might be something that you would see?
You could. I, I mean, do I think that, um, you know, in a typical year, I don't think it would be that far off from this.
Correct. But it's, but it wouldn't be like, you know, 4% and now it's 20% or something, some huge discrepancy like that. Okay. Um, one of, I guess, my other question, I guess, sort of, I apologize if we're like jumping, jumping around here. Um, in terms of the summer school, um, you said for, for, for the high school, I guess, um, you talked about it being based around credit recovery. It wouldn't be an opportunity for a student to gain cred, it was, it's a credit recovery. A student wouldn't be able to say, I'm going to get ahead by getting some credit from this. The only way a student could earn credit would be if they had missed that credit during the previous school year. That's correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, in this, the summer program at the younger grades, are they going to be grouped, I don't, you may not know this, but are they going to be grouped by grade? Or is it going to be, so it's going to be like all first graders, the other second graders, third graders, and that's how the curriculum is set up?
Yep. It's by grade level and it reviews the grade level standards for those grade levels that they just completed.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Smol.
You're welcome. Other questions or comments? Mr. Raxdale?
Um, I, I made a note that on, uh, in the slides discussing the literacy benchmark data, uh, that one of the slides for kindergarten, uh, was stating that there were, I believe, excuse me, about 66 students below, uh, below average. Um, was that supposed to say below grade level? Because the other, I think most of the slides discussed below grade level. Uh, this was slide 26.
I can take a look at that. I believe, I believe so. Uh, let's see. So, yes, I, I think it's, um, yes, I believe it is, um, oh, because we're looking at, kindergarten is looking at Ames Web. Um, so it has a different performance scale. So it's, it's, they're looking at it as, um, the way it's reported out is below average in that case. So that is accurate because we are not looking at the best in this case. We're looking at the Ames Web literacy scores.
Okay. But that's, and that's looking at a broader average, obviously not our own students.
Correct.
Cause we can't, it's not, it's not Lake Wobegon here. All students can't be above average.
Correct. They can be. Just give them a little more time.
They'll get, they'll get there. Um, and I, I had one more question that I wanted to ask about some of the, the SEL data. Um, one of the things that, I mean, I think most of the SEL data that we saw here looked fairly encouraging. Um, but one of the things that we heard from, um, Christine Murray, uh, as we were ramping up to our full return to in-person was that the, kind of the behavioral health staff and counselors had seen an uptick in students, um, needing additional emotional support, uh, and some deterioration in their, uh, mental health. Does it seem like the data that we have here fits with that? Would we expect, would we expect it to? I'm curious about, and I, and this may be a tricky question because they were, I think, gathered in, of course, different ways. But I'm wondering if we feel that these two data points tell a consistent story?
It's a great question because I don't have this data from teachers from any other year. We didn't ask them to capture the percentage of students that they felt needed those level of tiered supports. So, um, so I don't know that for a fact. And I do believe that, I mean, I, I know what they're seeing, that, um, I mean, it, it's very true that that's all happening. So whether or not the percentages match equally, or if it's the level of need that we're seeing is different. So students who are struggling are having a higher level of need, um, as compared to supports that could just be handled in the class. So, um, I, again, I would default to, um, you know, looking at the panorama data that we'll be able to collect to give us much more information about that.
Could I, could I just piggyback on, on that? Um, is that, I, I, that's something, as he went through your presentation, that I was, I was watching. And it appears that in granted, it's slight, um, but each percentage represents an actual child with, you know, um, that, 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 um, the, uh, how was it used? Excuse me, in the pie chart piece, the, um, no concerns dwindled as the grade, as the grades progressed through the grades. Um, and it, and that's something that, you know, I, I noticed. And the, um, you know, as well as the significant supports managed in class piece kind of, um, also dwindled through the grades. And I think that's, granted, it's not the, it's, it's a very broad brush of, of what's seen, was seen. Um, but I think that's very telling, um, especially, um, as I've always come to understand, fourth grade is a very pinnacle year, a year for students in their learning, um, in their abilities. And I think, um, that needs, really does need to be vetted much more closely as we approach next fall and, and vetting that social, emotional aspect to learning. Because I think that really, and how we step off in the fall, um, in the classroom, and I think is going to be, um, is going to give us the strongest foundation to collect more accurate data in order to create more, in order to create more individual, interventional structures, um, in the areas of social, emotional, as well as curriculum, in order for these students to learn. Because, um, I really am excited about, um, I don't think we should call it summer school. I think we need to find up something a little more creative so that when parents pose this to the kids, say, hey, do you want summer?
Summer academy.
Yeah, something like that. Because I think the connotation of summer school meaning no vacation as opposed to, hey, here's an activity.
It's a learning camp.
Would be more engaging, um, and it, for students. But, um, but I, I really do think, because I, I, you know, seeing what we're seeing in the uptick in the medical profession of medical professionals, um, uh, still with the anxiety, the depression, um, you know, the stressors from, uh, quarantining and things of that sort, as well as treating of patients, that's still on the rise. And, um, I think burnout is a big part of that in that field. Um, I, I just would, you know, I think the stronger foundation we can get in that realm, um, for the, the fall, stepping off in the fall, uh, both for staff and students, I think it would, um, lead to better outcomes.
Absolutely.
And, and work.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Smol?
Yeah, sorry. Um, I just, I just, I realized that I didn't say this, and I kind of wanted to start off by, by saying like, this is like an incredible amount of data. And I think that this is really, really, um, beneficial. And I think the fact that it's based on some of these teacher impressions and that it's this formative data where you're able to take it and create a plan based on that, um, I think, um, is, is fantastic, especially going into next year, especially with having the, the incoming, the teacher that, you know, kids get passed off to the new teacher. That new teacher is going to have a lot of this information. And yes, it's from May, uh, fifth or sixth.
Yeah.
But, um, I still think, um, it's going to be really, really valuable. So, um, thank you for, for, for leading this. And thanks to all the teachers who sort of, um, helped, uh, bring this all together. I think this is, um, just a great, great process. And I'm, I'm really happy to, um, have heard this presentation and seen these numbers. So thank you so much for that.
Yeah. I mean, it certainly, um, was a collective effort on so many parts, but the, the teachers entering this information and, and doing so quickly in a timely way, um, was so helpful and important in really having this snapshot. So I'm appreciative to everyone who was involved in helping to put it together.
Mrs. Brand?
Um, general question. Um, anybody can answer. So any idea, um, with regards to when the MCAS, um, result would be anticipated, um, in the fall, I would presume, since it's such a late assessment? Because I didn't know if that data would be a contributory factor to the work that, that will be going on in the fall and such. I didn't, I didn't know what, if, what, any maybe preliminary thoughts were around that? And/or if there was a, um, proposed, um, deadline that districts can see the results of those, um, health harmless results from MCAS?
Are you looking, are you looking, Mr. Raxdale?
Forgive me. I should be looking at Jen through the chair.
I think you're looking at Mr. Rax-
Which you're asking Dr. Brand, or maybe Mr. Raxdale has some exciting information.
Forgive me.
I think that's what's happening here. Dr. Brand says to Dr. Brand.
I, 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 I do not know. I'm not aware of anything. Uh, if, if anything is put out, I, I have not seen it. Uh, I don't believe, Ms. Ellie, I don't think-
I would turn it over to- I would turn it over to Mr. Ragsdale, if he has any inside scoop on that.
Uh, the district will have information, will have data over the summer. There's still gonna be an early reporting period. So hopefully they'll, you know, get, uh, get something in, you know, end of June.
Oh, really?
Or, or into July. Usually it's preliminary, there's some preliminary results, but not like full. There's still a whole bunch of decisions that are still being made about what's being reported.
Do you think it would be anticipated that we'd have a clearer picture of those results by end of August? So that work can kind of?
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, full, full, the district, the district should have full results by, by the end of August. That's, it is, it is a later testing window, but there's also less to score this year because there's only one session for grades three through eight. So hopefully we'll not take as much time to, to do all the scoring.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I don't have a question, just a comment about the writing. You've mentioned this a couple of times, but this has sort of been an area of focus for us for some, for some time now. I'd love an update, maybe in the early fall, to really understand how Writer's Workshop is rolling out in all the elementary schools.
Absolutely. Yeah, we were in the rolling out phase prior to the pandemic hitting. So we're gonna have to, we'll do a, a heavy focus on it again in the fall and, and shift all of our PD around that and really work to make sure people feel solid with that, so.
Yeah, I mean, and it was after the rolling out of the reading workshop. But I still feel as though that's in some of its early phases in some places as well. So maybe sort of doing a reading, writing workshop.
Absolutely.
Update would be helpful.
Sure.
And I imagine we'll be hearing more of this come the fall, once we have obviously the MCAS results and then the early fall monitor, and that would be helpful.
Sure.
All right. I'm gonna move us on to eight C, which is surplus equipment report.
You have a memo from Mr. Lord in your packet. And this is a rather customary exercise, if you will, of bringing this to the committee for those items that have been identified and declared as surplus. So Mr. Lord provides an outline of many items, many items rather, within the technology department. And they're here for your review and then approval. There's a vote for this that would be requested.
So you see here, the items and the font of these, is there a motion? Mrs. Burns?
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Fennelly, thank you, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to eight E, Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Job Proposal. There are two items that accompany this in your packet. First off, a memo and then a job description along with this. But I, I'm, I'm very excited to, I know some members of the subcommittee are aware of this, but to be able to bring this to the full committee. Miss Elliott has been representing the district for a good number of, well, weeks, probably more months now on my behalf, and has been participating with, or as part of rather, discussions with the SEEM collaborative board. And what started out as, I think, most, if not all, of the districts. And over the course of the last number of months, have gotten to the point where this position has emerged. This is a Joint Coordinator of Equity, Diversity and Inclusion. And what is clearly realized amongst, I think, most, if not all, districts is the need to expand capacity, bring focus and leadership to this, obviously collectively vitally important area. And it's one that I think is shared in the recognition of, for some at least, adding a full-time person or role to this may be a difficult first step financially and/or other. And this idea of collaboration emerged. And I think it's, I, I think quite honestly, it makes great sense as a very first step. You'll see in the memo what's outlined is the six districts that have collectively with, with school committee approval, which I'm hopeful that you'll provide this evening, an opportunity for Wilmington to join with Lynnfield, North Reading, Melrose, Stonem and Woburn as part of this six district consolidation to share one position. This is, this is a position that would be for next school year with a cost sharing. And you can see in the memo is outlined, it's anticipated to be approximately twenty thousand dollars. And this would be for a one-year term. But like other positions that exist in, in this, in this sort of realm or way, could be extended. But of course, would be something that would have to be brought back to respective committees. The proposal for our participation in this from a funding standpoint, or funding standpoint, sorry, or budgetary, would be through available grant funding. And so certainly that's, that's something that I, I point out here. You can see, the intention is to start, have a start date of July first. It's, it's ambitious, but with that being said, there is a posting that's out there. This, of course, all from, through my lens anyway, is tentative on your approval as a committee. This is a budgetary item, and so that's important, I do wanna point that out. And that's why it's here ultimately. This has just emerged and, and it's not been, I'm not even sure if any of the other districts at this point in time have brought this forth to their school committees, to be honest with you. But this is all in the end happening quite quickly here. But a commitment to try and bring this person onboard for the next school year. As you can see, there's the job description there. And with all of that, I'm very happy to take any questions that you might have, but.
Mrs. Burns?
Um, thank you. I, I would be in, you know, full support of this. But I do have some concern that one person can achieve the, the goals sort of outlined for across six school districts. So I'm just curious as to thought that's kinda gone into, you know, we obviously want this position and this person to have, you know, an impact and, and for the work to be really meaningful and productive. I, I guess I just worry about sharing, you know, sharing somebody. Across, you know, sort of splitting them by six. And how they will be able to really have a meaningful impact in one specific district in that regard. So that's just a, something I've been chewing on as I've kind of read the, the job description.
Great question and understandable. And I have the same, I think we all do. And I think that there's a few things here. First off, you know, in, in terms of where we're at, you know, post-budget development, this obviously was not a specific position that was, at least for fiscal year twenty-two, right forward. And to, to be honest with you, unless this emerged, I don't, we wouldn't, I don't think be, you know, quite frankly, anywhere in terms of trying to provide capacity. And then low and behold, right, this, this emerged as an opportunity. It amounts to approximately, I think, thirty days or thirty, thirty-five days per district, which certainly on one hand is, you know, on one, on one hand is thirty, thirty-five more days than we would otherwise have for an individual to be able to commit to, whether it be full days or some, you know, combination thereof. But that's still not a lot. But, but, you know, it, it's something more. And the other thing that I think is just worth noting as it relates to this, with the subcommittee, the equity subcommittee, we, we had talked about the very next and important and logical step for our districts. And by the way, incidentally, as I understand it, for all of the districts, that the first step would be the completion of an equity audit. That seems to be a logical starting point, a one that, my understanding, Christine can speak to this, was a primary focus of the conversation and what districts were looking for. And it's what we were thinking and what I was originally planning to actually bring to, to the committee. Gathering some data, limited as it is, but gathering some data from equity audit cost estimates, it's quite surprising to me actually, and was, I've been told in the range of somewhere between twenty to upwards of thirty-plus thousand, thirty-five thousand now, or actually more now. Obviously, the upper price I'm sure would be for much larger districts. But nevertheless, a lot, not just a couple hundred or a couple thousand dollars. So, you know, sort of trading that off, I can tell you that it sounds like the intention of most of the districts would be their first priority would probably be an equity audit. And I think that would be for us too. So I think it will be, I think we're still gonna be, have a yearning for more time. But again, it's sort of as a first step. It's, uh, you know, I think it's, it's, it's worth considering anyway. Where we go from here, you know, for fiscal year twenty-three or beyond will of course quickly be the question, I guess.
Mr. Smaha and then Mrs. Burns?
I would just say, you know, as sort of representing the equity subcommittee, we, we've talked about this. And we've talked about where, where sort of, you know, where, where we think the district should probably go with this. And it's, this is, as, the equity subcommittee definitely is in support of this. We all sort of, you know, agreed that this is probably the best starting off point, jumping off point, I think, into this work. And I think that, to sort of answer some of what, what was some of your concerns, as I shared some of those concerns too, you know, is like, you know, what are we really getting for, you know, you know, for this money? But I think when you really take a look at this, you know, on the whole, is, this is what I think makes the most sense. And then given that the, the equity audit prices were way beyond anything any of us really had, had thought about. So, um, you know, I think this makes, um, I, you know, personally, I think this makes a, a ton of sense. And I think we'll, we'll know more as we get into it and sort of see. I think we'll be able to get a lot of information about where are we gonna go from here? Because this is, I believe, and this is a one-year position, so it's not anything longer term than that. So it's sort of like, I think, a wise investment of our money to pursue this endeavor. And then, but at the end of the year, we can see, we can see where we are and, you know, assess, was this, you know, how was, was this a good decision? Do we need more? What, what else do we need based on this? I think it's a really fantastic starting, jumping off point, starting point.
Thank you. Can I, I just wanna add on to that just very quickly from our meeting. The other thing, and so I share all the same concerns and I agree with everything that's been said. I will say that what I, I do sort of appreciate about this position is the idea that it is spanning different towns and different practices. And I think that will be helpful actually, in a lot of ways, that I could see this consultant seeing certain things done in one place and then use, using some of that to say, hey, let's go over there and check that out. And I think that when you're talking about equity, diverse and inclusion, having those partnerships and relationships with your surrounding districts can be very helpful in some of this work. Knowing full well that moving forward, we're probably going to need to invest quite a bit more and hopefully have our, our own officer here in, in Wilmington. But I think it's a good starting point to, 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 to get us where we need to be and also to do it so quickly. Knowing that this would have taken us quite some time to add this to our, our budget. We would have been a few years off, so. Sorry, Mrs. Burns?
No, not at all. Just a comment and two questions. So I, I, I do think that the collaboration aspect, especially with the inclusion amongst the districts, would be helpful. And I think it would set up the work within our own district. So having that eye to the sky, as well as, I think important is the professional development piece that will come from this as well, which I think is huge. But just two kind of housekeeping questions really. Is there a search committee of, that, looking at applicants, went like a, reading through applicants? If that search committee is comprised of the districts involved here, that's my first question.
The answer is yes. There's not been a committee formed yet, but there is a full intention to have all six districts be participating, participating in the search, yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then the second question is that the request is to contribute twenty thousand dollars. Yet, you know, of the six districts, which comes up to what, what, a hundred and twenty thousand, yes? The range they placed in there is between ninety-five and one-ten. So where does that ten K go? And I guess, let me end there with that question.
So.
So each district's contributing twenty thousand, which is a hundred and twenty thousand, but the range is ten thousand less than the balance of all six districts?
Yes, and, and, you know, as I look at this, I probably should have reworded that at up to a maximum of twenty thousand dollars. And so that's my error, I apologize for that.
Oh, no worries.
But, but there will be a piece of possible benefits in addition to salary. And so that's something that certainly would be contributing to that as well too. If the combination of the package, that is to say, the salary and the benefits exceeds one hundred and twenty thousand, there is no elevating this number of twenty thousand, it won't go beyond. Anything above that SEEM collaborative is prepared to take on. So if it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand or whatever collectively, they'll, they'll make up that difference. So participating districts won't be asked to contribute any more than twenty thousand.
And did I, and just for clarification, because I'm not sure if I quite understand it, the money from this is, would this be grant funded?
The intention would be to utilize grant funds.
Under ESSR or?
Under, yes, under one of those which, yes.
Because the Stern Opportunity Act as well is another, I think, I've been kind of researching that too.
We have, I mean, I think it's fair to say, we, we haven't specifically remarked a specific grant, but the intention would be to utilize grant.
Okay.
With the grant fund, yes.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that, just so I have a better understanding of the work we're looking for that revenue. Thank you.
Mr. Ragsdale?
Just like to ask a, a little bit more about the process of selecting, selecting this person. But I think that, you know, getting the, getting the right candidate for this position is, is really important. Like any other field, there are some people who are better, better at this work than others. And, uh, that, I'm, I'm glad and I think it's, makes sense that all the districts are involved in making the selection. But, but in the end, you know, we have screening committees in Wilmington that, you know, review applicants and forward on, we think these are the strongest candidates. But in the end, you know, it's a principles or your decision to ultimately make the hire. Who's ultimately making this decision whether to bring someone on? And how much consensus do we have to have among the districts that it's the right person?
Yeah, I, I don't, Miss Elliott, I don't know if there's anything that, through your conversations that did emerge for that. I, I have to say that I, I've not yet been part of the, the next step. There was a rush to get the posting out. And a rush in the sense of, you know, once it was finally decided to try and hit July first. I think there's still subs, there are not still, there is absolutely conversations about exactly the mechanics of how that search will go and so on. I don't think, Christine, that, that was part of.
They haven't gotten to that level of detail yet. They are looking to see from each of the communities who will be sitting, you know, looking for the name of, is it the superintendent or assistant superintendent sitting on that search committee to help be a part of that process? So we, I believe, I believe it's a meeting either this week or next week possibly coming up that we might be able to get more information about what, when the next steps are for the hiring process and how that ultimately will be determined.
Okay, because I think, I think that's an important, important thing for us to, to straighten out. I mean, there is a lot of, a lot of benefits that have been brought up about being able to share, you know, share. I mean, your trade-offs, trade-offs either way. But I think that you wouldn't want to have a candidate that you weren't happy with kind of imposed on you with a financial commitment that you've already made. And then getting, you know, an equity audit or anything else off on the wrong foot in a direction that you weren't happy with. Because you didn't have control over the hiring process.
It's, so certainly something that I can, and I'm happy to bring back more information as that's finalized. I, in fact, I just reached out to Kathy Lawson tonight before the meeting to find out more specifically about timeline. Because before I can identify whether it be myself or someone else to participate on behalf of Wilmington, there needs to be a sense of what that exact, their timeline is for, you know, how, how they're gonna run the search. So I most certainly can bring back the answers to some of your questions about, about that. But I can absolutely confirm that all six will have, you know, they'll be at the table in the decision-making.
Because it's a little bit of a tricky problem. Like on some level, there needs to be commitment from the districts to do this because you can't just suddenly have three districts with, you know, withdraw and like, oh, sorry, we only have sixty thousand dollars available or whatever. The three remaining are on the hook now for forty thousand dollars to hire the person.
Yep.
Mrs. Burns?
So I, I would say that all districts involved that drew the SEEM would have weight on this. Don't call it a collaborative for nothing, but I say that whimsically. But I, I do think it is a worthy risk. And I think we, I think your, your points are quite valid, and I couldn't agree more. But I think that all six districts probably going in with that same, you know, at least in the back, they have that same kind of concern. It's finding the right candidate to meet the needs of all six districts. And that in itself will be difficult. So I think personality and what they bring to that position is gonna weigh heavily as to how they can intermingle amongst six diverse districts. So I think, and I was gonna ask you something to, oh, the other aspect I was gonna comment on that, maybe it's relevant or. on that, maybe it's relevant or irrelevant, so I apologize beforehand, that although I'm sure the search committee to vet up these, the initial applicants, I do think that the weight of all the districts involved in that decision process and that discussion, like we, we, you know, have done in hiring the superintendent and things of that, so it will kind of take place, I think. I, I, you know, and seeing how SEEM has expanded their programming, as far as I know from what's been reported through the superintendents, you know, that it's done very collaboratively and every person at the table's position is, I think, very weighted with their colleagues and if that lends itself to any kind of reassurance and with the concern that you bring up, because I do, I do think that, I do validate it, but I just wanted to, if it helps any.
Mrs. Elliott?
Just to, to piggyback on that idea, as, as I've been sitting in on these meetings, the actual job description was a shared Google Doc that we were all contributing to and we were all filtering together, so it has been a very collaborative process so far with all of the members of this group that are invested in this process and so it's been very collegial, very well organized, very structured. Kathy's done a fantastic job facilitating all of this and just to point out, we do have an existing shared position that has been very, very successful. All right, we pay a percentage of, with another group of districts in the SEEM collaborative for our inclusion specialist, Emily, I was just mentioning Emily Pat, who we work with and we have X amount of days earmarked with Emily and she's doing the work with us related to the D cap revision. So we do have some prior experience and it's been very, very well done, so I'm optimistic that it would follow suit, so.
Thank you. Okay, so you are looking for a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion? Mr. Smaha?
I move that we, so moved, can I say that?
He's moved.
So I move that we approve the position, the position of, of the, to approve the $20,000, up to $20,000 to join the hiring SEEM collaborative district. For hiring a joint coordinator of equity, diversity and inclusion.
I'll second.
Sorry, Tracy, do you have that? Tracy's like, let me just wait this down.
The poor guy sits next to me, you can't blame him.
So we just approved the $20,000 for the coordinator of equity, diversity and inclusion position.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, item F is actually not supposed to be there, right, correct?
That's right.
So we don't have, we're not ready for that yet.
No.
So number nine, we have some subcommittee reports, are there any subcommittee reports?
CPAC meeting tomorrow night at 6:30, Google Meet. Link was sent out to families by the student support office yesterday.
Excellent, and how has the attendance been?
Um, up and down.
Okay.
Are the meetings posted on our website on the CPAC page?
It is not updated yet, we are working on, they have to do a whole overhaul of the CPAC page, so they are working on pulling that together and getting it over to Ken Lord to update.
Thank you, Joe. Other subcommittee reports? The family community outreach committee met last night, we received an update from the parent guardian working group. I don't have, our minutes haven't been approved yet, so I don't have too much to share, but they are steadily moving along, collecting basically data from the PACs and parents, teachers, they are going to start reaching out to administrators, Dr. Brand is helping them to make those connections as well as the, the board of the teachers' union and they had some questions for us as well. So they will present all of this back to the subcommittee in June. Is that right, Joe? I don't have it right in front of me, in June. And then we will present to you or invite them to come back in and to do a presentation of what they have learned and if, what kind of a proposal they'd like to make to us. So just an update on that. Are there other subcommittee reports? Okay. A few, correspondence, sorry, Mrs. Burns?
None this evening.
Thank you. Future school committee dates, tomorrow evening is the Wilmington High School prom. It's my understanding that the prom out is going to take place on the town common, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, starting at 4:30.
Excellent, so thank you to our town officials for approving that and thank you obviously to Linda Peters and to her, her committee for, for making this happen. May 26th, we have our regular session meeting here at 7:00 PM. May 28th is opening day for the virtual art show. June 4th is Class of 21 Scholarship Night at 6:30. June 6th, Class of 21 Graduation at 1:00 PM. And we have two regular session meetings, June 9th and June 23rd. Just for the committee, are there places for us to attend those events? Are we, do we know yet? Should we mark our calendars?
I sent out a email, I think, yesterday, with the dates to see who is going to attend what and to let me know so I can get the ID's BP back to the SEEM high school.
And we can all, and all of us can be there?
Unless she gets, they get a mad flood or restrictions change, whoever is interested is able to attend.
All right, excellent. And I think that's it, unless someone else has something before we adjourn? All right, so a final motion please? Mrs. Burns?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Mrs. Plowman, thank you, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, folks. Good night.
Thank you, Christine, good luck tonight.